One of the first things that y'all are gonna need to do tonight is select somebody to run the meeting. Both the chair and the vice-chair are not gonna be able to be here tonight. According to the rules, uh, in your rulebook laws, uh, the body selects an individual to be chairman for that evening. So, I don't know if you, how you want to do that. Um, I can give you some slips of paper, or you can make a nomination and raise your hands.
Um, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I'll, I'll try to run the meeting. I, you know, I haven't done any progress rules or anything in a long, 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 long time. Um, but, uh, you don't feel like you wanna run tonight? How about you, man? Well, do you feel like you can handle the procedure? Alright, I mean, I'll try, but I, I, I'm afraid I'm gonna screw it up.
Hey, it's all the process.
Um, I would take it back to fall.
If you do it, I think it's bad, I mean, that's...
We, we can either move forward or...
Okay.
Um, now, Mr. Key, I think, so that there's no, just procedurally, if somebody would nominate you and get a second, and you raise your hands, so that there's no question down the road that we're, we're handling it appropriately.
I will nominate Tim Key to be the, the chair of the meeting tonight in the absence of both the chairman and vice-chairman for this meeting.
I would second that question.
It's been properly, well, am I, did not?
Um, yeah, all in favor? Yes, sir, you're Mr. Chairman.
Okay, ready?
Okay.
Okay, I think what's on the agenda, uh, for the night is the study session, um, and do you wanna go ahead and, um, open that? Do we have to open it procedurally?
Yes. We, um, this month, we're, um, supposed to look at the three chapters in our comprehensive plan that we're updating. There are the natural resources, uh, historic and cultural, and priority investment. And I hope, you know, we all had an opportunity to kind of... Alright, be nice. Um, kinda take a look at this as we were going through. The big thing, um, and, and I don't know if y'all wanna go over the chapters, or just look at the goals. The goals in the back of the chapter to me is, is the meat and potatoes, um, and then the historic... Um, the historical... The, um, eight point one, first goal was to, uh, expand the arts and other cultural resources. Expand creative arts, cultural events, and resources offered in public space and city programs that support them. And Mr. Chairman, what we may wanna do, and, and if I'm going in left field correctly...
Okay, okay.
Just, just pull me on back to center. I'm, I'm not proud. Um, but make sure that these are goals that the planning commission wants to keep. Or do you wanna change them and modify them as we go through them? So, how are we gonna get there? Um, the first phase is to promote local artists, and that's the, uh, North Augusta Artist Guild. Will continue to identify and work to promote local artists. Uh, partnering with local artists to create public art or exhibit work in community centers. City Hall and downtown businesses will identify the city as a place that is friendly to the arts. And I'll just go through these, and if y'all have a comment on any of them, let me know. Uh, eight point one point three, require a public art element in all municipal projects. Promoting art in North Augusta will help make the city more aesthetic and attract individuals throughout the CSRA. Requiring public art or some cultural element in all municipal projects will ensure the city is making cultural and aesthetic improvements, which may be beneficial to the city and the community. And eight point one point four is connect places of cultural significance to public open spaces through multimodal and greenway facilities. Identify existing and future locations of places and cultural significance, and connect them through greenway facilities and other public spaces. Enhance sidewalks and trails with furniture, lighting, seating, and other design elements that will enhance downtown and the grue way facilities. And I have to say that this is something that the city is currently moving forward on. Existing community events and programs should be supported and expanded when possible. Um, existing events and programs should be supported and expanded by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. The city should promote these new programs throughout the community and ensure that the programs are offered for the entire population of citizens, including children, young adults, families, and seniors. And that will help cultivate healthy and active residents. Uh, one resource to consider for cultural events is the South Carolina Heritage Center, which runs through North Augusta with a few sites located in the city, including the Arts and Heritage Center, Rosemary Bed and Breakfast, and Lookaway Hall. Protect and restore historic resources important to Aga- North Augusta's identity. Identify historical resources and develop a maintenance and renovation program and funding to ensure their protection. Eight point two point one would be to identify the historic resources important to North Augusta's identity and ensure their protection with funding and maintenance. In addition to the Georgian Butler Avenue Historic District and additional buildings listed in the National Historic Register, identify important structures, parks, and open spaces, natural features, fences, walls, cemeteries, et cetera, um, that contribute to the identity of North Augusta. Uh, these should be listed, prioritized, and funding should be allocated to ensure their maintenance and preservation. Funding can include grants, historic tax credits, and/or city monies. Work with the owners of Lookaway Hall and Rosemary Hall to ensure their preservation and maintenance. Lookaway Hall and Rosemary Hall are both important to the historic identity of North Augusta. They're physical reminders of the city's founding on their prominent location on a hill overlooking downtown. It's imperative they remain icons in North Augusta's identity. Creating a Friends of Lookaway Hall route to organize fundraising efforts where identifying grants and historic tax credits can assist in the building's maintenance. Protect historic neighborhoods and adjacent to downtown through the preservation of street network, paving materials, and open spaces, as well as promoting contact-sensitive infield development and the preservation of existing housing. Enhancement of the existing street network and the condition of roads, sidewalks, and open space can help ensure the preservation of historic, uh, character of the neighborhoods adjacent to downtown. Uh, promoting contact-sensitive development consistent with this character will help promote unique identity of North Augusta. And Mr. Chairman, that would be it for the historical and cultural. Is, do you ha- y'all have any discussions?
I have a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, on this historical stuff, is there anybody... I, I don't know of anybody in house that does any of this type of thing or encourages this, um, like Friends of, Friends of Lookaway, or things like that. Um, I mean, what are we doing here? Is this just something we've just written down?
Yeah, thi- this is, well, this is a goal. This, this is something in the next five... This is something in the next five, 10 years, the city is looking to achieve. And, you know, it may not be here today...
Anybody on staff will have some time to devote to that. I mean, y'all have been on staff for a long time.
Right, and, you know, if you're going to staff...
And I don't mean a full-time person. Because I don't know that it wants a full-time person.
And it depends how it's structured to be quite, you know... But I understand what you're saying. And when you start regulating historic buildings and with the certificates where they have to get approval for the work and that type of thing, there's a lot of background that goes in there, and there's a lot to it.
Yeah, if you go to that route, kind of like Aiken, I guess you wouldn't form somebody because anything you do as far as you're changing the structure makes a lot of historical difference.
Well, and you also have to have a person that one believes in the cause, devoted to it, and has good talking skills. Can deal with people.
I don't think that we've had anybody in the city that's really been interested in this as far as I've been here. I've been around a long time, built, I've been working on old houses, and I know there's just not the interest here from a historical standpoint. So, I just wonder, you know, this all looks well and great, but, you know, without somebody to kind of spearhead this or stand behind it.
Words on a page. I get it. And that's where, you know, if it's adopted and it's put in the, on the goals, and we get the marching orders to move in this direction from above, then we'll do that. And if it's not one of the priorities that we get from administration...
Well, I think from, somebody that likes old houses and, you know, I think that it really is an integral part of a city when you've got those historical buildings well-preserved. And, you know, I've seen too many instances here in the city where the city hasn't encouraged or required it to be removed if they're damaged or something like that. And, you know, there's just been no desire to preserve and protect any of this old apartment.
Got you.
And how would we do that if I was a concerned citizen retired and was not quite a zealot, but really wanted these old buildings to be protected and participate? How does that person interject themselves into assisting the city with some of these projects? Is there any way, I mean, we got it on a page where, you know, we're with the owners, identify, and if a person or a group or Boy Scouts say we're gonna target all the houses built before 1910, how would they be able to interject themselves with sanction by the city to assist them in some of that, some of, provide some of that, um, network?
We would need to, each one would need to look at on a case-by-case basis what their resources are, what they bring to the table, how they could assist us, what liabilities we might be putting on them, what liabilities the city may be incurring, and is this a direction that the city wants to go at that particular time? And all of that would be, you know, hashed out behind the scenes, and then they would, you know, council would meet and say, yes, we wanna do this, or no, we don't.
Is there any way that we could put within these guidelines future plans, some type of application process to be heard by council? Does, you know, you have some cities that have service organizations that can make applications online to say we wanna participate, and then they could be vetted based on the application? Is that something that would be assisted instead of just having words on a page that we can... Because I don't foresee in the future that we're gonna have any resources for someone to be on, on staff to...
Identify, especially if you're trying to put a full-time person...
Yeah, so if we don't get participation from the general public, you know, then it's gonna be just words on a page, basically.
I think, but I look at what you're talking about in the bigger picture. I don't know that the appropriate place for the application would be in goals. I look at it, should the city have someplace where an organization that wants to be involved in any particular service, maybe they wanna be involved in something with the parks, or, you know, that they could apply and be heard. So, I think there might be something there, but I don't know that this is the place for it. I think you could have a bigger umbrella.
I think that one of the things that we could do, and the city council may go for, would be if they could at least designate an area of the city that we look at as a historical district. And in that historical district, at least have a review before a structure is taken down. At least review the historical significance of that structure before it's demolished and something's put up that's totally out of character in that neighborhood. And, you know, that was the, that was the overall thought process behind the neighborhood preservation overlay, which, I mean, it's turned into a can of worms, but that was the core reasoning behind that overlay. And I just think that's something that wouldn't be that difficult to do, to do as much towards preserving historical significance of the city as you possibly could.
Well, Mr. Watts, is that something that you, that the planning commission would like to add as a goal?
Well, I...
This would be the proper place.
Well, I think, especially the commission, I think that's the one thing that we could do as a city. And it's not really being, putting overburden on anybody, but at least just have a review. That's not to say they can't take a structure down. You know, right now, you can tear anything down if you want, but nobody can do stop. And I don't know that we want to go to the extent of Aiken or Charleston. You know, I don't, I don't think people are gonna go for it here. But I think that at least make it, that this is a historical district, and, and, and at least before we take it down, we have a review. They just took a little unit down on Main Street, or Main, it was a burn. It had a fire. And it was a little stucco, huge little house. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that all the guys from Aiken liked. And I don't know if the city required them to take that house down or if they just didn't wanna try to take it. But I don't know. But I think that's one of the situations where a review might have, might have saved that house.
And if that's something y'all want, I will add it.
Well, I would make a question if I get a second, I would make a question if you had a second.
Just my comments would be that, you know, I think from your earlier comments, Larry, without a point-to person, it's gonna be difficult to do some of the stuff I think we want to do. But what you, your idea probably could work if we could put in some sort of procedure and protocol to have that done as far as that district. But the only question I would have is, where is that particular district? I know we've got probably groups of it in different parts of the city and stuff like that.
You know, Richard always felt like that the Boeing track should have been a historic district. Well, there's a lot of historic houses outside of that track. But at least that is the core 1906 Luke Franklin City.
So, that's a start.
That is. Yes, it would, it would. That would be the first part of that. The second part, it would not, as far as a review before a structure is destroyed.
And that burden of...
But there's no, there's nothing set up there, bashed it to say what that protection is or how to do that protection. I don't see it.
The D should be listed, prioritized, and fund, funding should be allocated to ensure their maintenance and preservation. Funding can include grant, historic tax credit, and/or city monies.
Well, like Larry said, it doesn't say who, really, Mr.... It's, it's all well and good, but...
Most of the time, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to...
I think that's making a recommendation, I think. We're still in the review process, you can put that in. I don't think we necessarily need a motion to have to put in.
But I did like the 8, the 8.1.3, requiring a public art element. I thought that was a very good projection. And, you know, while you got the plan to do a municipal project, you know, why not throw those...
Are we ready to go to the next chapter, or do we...
Just a quick question, a quick question, that's still kinda new. We've got a comprehensive plan already, right? This is revisions to the existing comprehensive plan.
Yes.
So, pardon what I did, but what if this is new, you know, is this already in place because of the old comprehensive plan? And what is being done to enforce that? Or is it just still just words on a page? Is any of this, does this comprehensive plan ever become official? Or we just keep revising it every couple of years? And then this is what we want it to be like, you know, at some point? So, I help me understand what this document is.
Well, remember, the comprehensive plan is a plan. It's not a regulatory document. So, you have the items in the plan, and then you take those items up, and council passes ordinances, resolutions, to put the regulatory in place.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no key in the comprehensive.
Right.
Totally, you know, and so much of the time, things are done totally opposite. You know, it's just the city council.
The commission will later report to the city periodically. Would it have any, have you followed this and you done this or you done that? That's not, you know, fine, you helped us, but, I mean, there is some shit that's out there. Which, I have to put all this together, and, you know, we have done what we'd like to do, or we have to get the rest yet. And you make some presidential...
And a lot of times, we just totally ignore it.
The trade is that we could do it, but here we're all good. Yes, I brought that like a right hand.
And it's a living, breathing document that changes over time, and... But it's a document that we have to have in place in order to have land development regulations and plant, and zoning, so...
The only other feedback, buddy, is the headers of the page, "Cultural," is spelled incorrectly, but I figured somebody will pick that up at some point, so...
I got it. Alright, sir. Mr. Chairman, you ready to go to the next chapter? We'll go to chapter nine, and I know it says chapter seven. I believe it's supposed to be nine. Natural Resources Goals and Strategies. 9.1 is preserve and expand the tree canopy. And this is adopt regulations and coordinate between city departments to preserve and plant more trees. 9.1.1, maintain our Tree City USA designation. In 2018, the city added a certified arborist to its property maintenance division. And with the help of this arborist, the city should be able to maintain its Tree City USA designation as well as maintain a tree board or department, implement a tree care ordinance, adopt a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and host an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. 9.1.2, create regulations to protect significant trees. The city can identify significant trees and adopt development regulations to require the preservation of these significant trees where appropriate. And yes, Mr. Bigger, I misspell, require. I didn't catch it till just now. Implement a city street tree program. Implement a city program to plant trees in existing right-of-ways where none currently exist and on city property where appropriate. I would say that as far as the city street trees go, they are required in new residential subdivisions. Protect the Savannah River and other natural resources. Coordinate with other organizations and adopt policies to protect natural resources in North Augusta. Cooperate with other government entities in the management of water resources. Continue cooperation with the states of South Carolina and Georgia, Aiken County, Augusta, Richmond County, Columbia County in the cooperative management of water resources in the Savannah River Basin. Maintain the Augusta Pool to preserve natural resources. Provide for appropriate economic development and maintain an adequate water supply for the area. Acquire and otherwise permanently protect environmentally sensitive areas. Utilize unavailable, utilize available city funding and inner governmental grants to acquire natural drainage ways, Carolina Bays unprotected, upland, wetlands, and other environmentally sensitive areas for open space preservation, stormwater management, parkland, and extensions of the greenway system. Work with other local governments to protect the New Savannah Bluff Lock and Dam. Continue to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to restore the New Savannah Bluff Lock and Dam as well as Savannah Harbor Expansion Fish Passage to allow sturgeon and other species to move freely through the dam. And that would be it for that chapter. Sounds great. I thought we would have more discussion on that one.
Well, I think that one of the things that you're gonna really protect your woodlands and stuff like that, you're gonna have to, the city's gonna have to not be so willing to go out and panic properly.
Well...
Sometimes, you know, that's what it takes. Because, you know, everything that's getting built now is going in small slabs, I mean, small flat, flat houses. There's no way to do it, but it's okay.
Right.
That's great. Anybody can say whatever they want, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of runoff on those sites, a lot of detriment to your stream beds. But it's just, you know, I mean, we, we create our own problems. It's like the car team, you know, have to be, see where our enemy was and possess.
Yes. The, the construction industry is not what it used to be, is it?
I don't know.
And, you know, had that, I was talking to a fella that was wanting to move here, and I started telling some track builders, he said, "No, no, no, I wanna find a lot." Ooh, because how do you find a lot now to build on? It's tough.
But I like all the ideas you've made. Just ended a little, but I was just thinking that we've got some core problems that we, apart from what we've had.
Got you.
You know, in us, in cities trying to determine what they wanna be inherent, that in itself is a problem. When you go down to a Charleston or Hilton Head, or in Greenville when they're downtown, they know what they wanna be. And so, in them knowing what they wanna be, I was in Charleston last week, and they, they're putting in this big development on the water and... and by this restaurant, and it's got this long boardwalk. And it's in an industrial area where they all got to fix the, um, cotton exchange or some exchange building that has two sides, one that's facing the water and the other one that's facing the, um, city. And I drove about a quarter mile down the road, and they had the facade of a building probably built in eighteen hundreds. And it was only the facade. It was scottled up, and there was nothing else around it. They tore everything probably around it, um, and that building, it was just standing there in the parking lot, and they just didn't destroy that. So Charleston know what they want to be, Savannah know what they want to be. But then we have, um, places like North Augusta where we're trying to find our identity. And then we use this, um, um, comprehensive plan that we're supposed to be making decisions to go back to, and it's not saying that we want to be, um, similar to a historical area or similar to a modern area. Um, and so, um, until we identify what we really want to be, I think we did decide that we want to be a walkable city, um, with the, with the, um, sidewalks and the greenway. So I think we have accomplished that, but how, what do we want to look like? And I think until we identify, um, what we want to be in the next fifty years, we'll always be coming back to this, um, do we, the developers, do they not maximize their, um, um, investment or the use of the land so they got the clear cut? And that's great. Or do we want to be a city with at least half acre lots? So until we can kind of have the foresight to determine what we want to be, it's gonna be folks like us trying to fill our way through. Anything else? We got priorities and investments that we need to?
All right, sir. Ten point one is to create strategies to implement the growth and development goals for public and private investment. Ten point one point one is monitor the implement, implementation of the plan annually. Um, basically, in January of every year, the planning commission should report to the city council on progress made in implementing an annual priorities list, established by the planning staff for the prior year, and will also report on any other matters relating to the implementation of the plan. In February of each year, the commission will work with the city council and staff, and will listen, list annual priorities for the implementation of this plan. Now, something just hit me when, and I don't know if we're doing this now or not, are we?
Nothing.
Listing it in January, um, doing this priority listing, cause I haven't got to January yet.
Well, have we ever done that? I can't remember.
It's been quite a while going through a priority.
And you're talking about every January, right?
Planning Commission.
Right, every year.
I don't think we've ever done that.
But as far as, as far as interaction with the city council, that would be enough.
Well, um, in what I'm thinking, and, and this is just me, is, you know, we, I'm wondering, we, we won't run on the calendar year fiscal budget. So, you know, should that be in July instead of January? Um, so that you're doing it as far as the budget process? And I just asked that question, uh, you know, um, anyway.
We, um, we did have a planning session, um, when, um, Libby was trying to, you know, get a priority so she can work her way through her plan, her budget. But it, you know, and then I think she was trying to, um, get feedback from us, how do we want to prioritize things that she needed to get accomplished? But short of that, that was the only, only time that I've ever known. But we've never gotten with, um, city council to say, what are the priorities? I mean, um.
I don't think they've ever, they've ever wanted a priority.
Okay.
If you pass on, say, these are the priorities, we might see this project.
Sounds good. Uh, ten point one point two, update the plan every five years, basically that's what we're doing. Uh, plan be updated every five years to ensure that it stays relevant, to add goals and strategies that may emerge. Explore new institutional arrangements. Now, where appropriate, new addition institutional arrangements to facilitate multi-jurisdictional cooperation on funding issues should be explored. Now, the word share the cost. And that would be it.
Thank you for the topic.
And then the next thing on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is do you want to discuss anything on the gen, on tonight's agenda?
I do. Um, you, you supplied us with the Infrastructure's, um, System Management LLC, um, this memorandum about the, um, existing traffic.
Yes, I, uh, I left, uh, two sets of documents on, on the dais for the planning commission. Um, one is pertains to information that I received regarding the, um, public safety rezoning or the city's rezoning of the property. And that includes an email, an opposition, and a traffic study or a quote, um, preliminary study. And then I also, um, it's either four or five emails, um, about the rezoning on Nob Cone in West, West Martin Town Road.
And I, I, I read those, um, I took note, um, specifically about this, um, um, existing traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm always looking for the cliff notes.
No, I couldn't understand.
Yeah, to tell me, uh, what this, it wasn't a comparison to anything, so I couldn't really tell if it's high or if it's low, because we got, um, you know, it's gonna add a, um, trip, trip generation of thirty-two entering, twenty exiting. Um, and I don't, I don't have really anything to compare it to, we got, um, um.
Mr. Clifford has asked the traffic engineer to be here for the regular meeting during that application, so that y'all can, you know, it's, um, it's, it's, it's above my head.
Okay.
I had one question about the, uh, the little screening deal out of, uh, the hotel.
Yes.
And the shrubbery, did, 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 uh, staff had input on the hot shrub they were picking out?
No, we did. Um, they did, to be quite honest, and sometimes I'm honest to a fault. Um, we missed it. And I didn't know anything about the change of plans and, and Tom Zizer said, wait a minute, Tommy, this needs to go back to the planning commission. And he brought me where the plans had been changed. And we reached back out and said, no, you got to put bushes there, and they came back with bushes.
They were gonna coordinate with the city on that when they left that night.
And they may have with Cully or Libby before, I just, you know, with me, they have it.
And I don't, I guess Roy's kind of out of the loop on that stuff.
Roy tends to handle the public spaces. He, um, I did, you know, my question is, is what is the height at maturity?
Five feet.
I think I got something that said eight to ten.
No, I usually take, take a five, up a five across, and to one.
Okay.
I can't get up higher than that, but it's, it's gonna take fifteen, twenty years.
Long time.
Yeah, that's, I don't know how much room they had, you know, between the cents and the curb, but, you know, it's, um, that was my, that was my concern, is it takes a long time, and then it really is never going to get up to the height of the fence. The problem behind it was is that the shrubbery, by the time cents fell down, the shrubbery would be big enough to conceal the line.
And you know, you know, planning commissions could certainly say, no, we would prefer, you know, larger.
I don't, I don't feel strong enough to say no, but I just doubt that it would have been my preference for that Roy or somebody who's, who's close to my family. Say, well, let's try this shrub instead. That's, that's all, um, that's the mind concern.
Got you.
And, and looking at, um, when I was reviewing it, um, Larry, you might be far better than me in reviewing these plans, but I couldn't make hands to tell, eh, other than reading the, um, we're talking fency, it was gonna be, I did drive by, take a look at it, and, um, uh, as I thought, it was, um, kind of a high sore. I saw the, the, uh, what, the way it is now, and I think they had two trucks, um, parked in there. And, um, it definitely does need screening. And I read your motion, and I sent it about, um, the screening, so it, it doesn't need to be, um, something that just satisfies us, it needs to be something that's appropriate for that area. That's what I've taken on it.
Even yet, sir?
Do, do you think somebody will be here representing Mackey tonight?
Yes, sir. Excuse me?
The Mackey, uh, rezoning, you think somebody would be here representing them tonight?
Um, Mr. Mackey should be. Um, Mrs. Mackey has recused herself, and she, my understanding is she won't be here.
Okay. I just had a question about that agreement they had with the city back in the eighties or whenever it was done.
That was not an agreement, that was a court order.
Okay, and, but only, we only saw part of it, the very last sentence, the seven, or something about the city would not require rezoning, or, or some, something about a zone, and I didn't.
Basically, uh, if they could have whatever was across the street. If, if, if across the street turned commercial, or so much of it turned commercial, they could have the same commercial on their side of the road.
I just, I, you know, I didn't know exactly what that was trying to say, everybody left.
Yes, um, they, when they were, that property was annexed under the, under the petition method. They opposed it, took the city to court, and when Judge Peoples wrote the order, that was in it. And that's about all the history of it I, I'm aware of.
I was not aware of that part of the history.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
Um, I will be asking you, uh, in regards to the, um, rezoning, um, and the, uh, misuse. Give us all of the, um, potential properties could be placed there.
I'll be prepared, sir.
Thank you.
Do you wanna, you wanna adjourn the study session, or?
Yeah, um, any objections?
Study session, good to meet you.
Thanks, sir.
Would you like to call the meeting to order?
Yes, sir, Mr. Key, um, planning commission. The, tonight, we are in a peculiar situation, uh, with the planning commission. Uh, both the chair, chairman is not here. And the vice chairman has recused herself and will not be attending the meeting. Uh, we reviewed, uh, Dr. Crawford and I reviewed the. Bylaws for the planning commission. And it states that in a case like this, the members at the, that are attending will select the person to act as chair during that meeting. So our first order of business would be for the body to, um, elect a chairperson to run the meeting.
I'd, uh, hope that we nominate, uh, Chairman Key to run the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, since y'all, um, elected me to be the chair for the night, I'd like to call the meeting officially, um, to order. And I'd like to have a roll call starting from my right.
Larry Watts. Uh, bigger. Bob Clark. Lynn Carter.
Um, having the roll call, I think we do have a quorum and we can conduct business, um, as usual. Um. As of the, uh, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, we had a regular meeting, um, have everyone had an opportunity to take a look at those minutes. Do y'all see of any corrections that might need to be, uh, made? Like getting your heads bobbling saying that you don't see any minutes, anything that, any errors and changes. Haven't heard any, um, I'd like to adopt the minutes, um, as, um, records for, um, as being legitimate, um, for this meeting. Mr. Paradise, um. On the agenda, um, can I get someone to make a motion to accept it as it is? Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye is having, we have order. The first thing on the agenda is application P P M two one dash zero zero three, a request for Maybaum Riverwood LLC to name the street. Streets in Walnut Village as Cork Tree Bend and Fountain Tree Pass. Mr. Paradise, can you enlighten us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, it is the, um. Planning commission's, uh, authority or responsibility to approve the naming of streets in the city. Uh, these streets were, um, put on reserve with Aiken County, uh, but they were never, um. They never went back and. Completed the loop. So when the developer went back to complete the loop, the names that he wanted to use were no longer there. So we've been working with Aiken County, the developer. And they've come up, would like to name the, these streets, uh, Cork Tree Bend and Fountain Tree Pass. And this is out in the Walnut Village section. Um. And as you see, the blue line and the red line is where those streets will be.
Does any commissioners have any questions of Mr. Paradise in regards to the renaming of the streets? It's pretty self-explanatory. Can we get a motion? Hearing no questions? Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a motion, um, by Commissioner Watts as far as renaming, um, the streets to, um, as Cork Tree Bend and Fountain Tree Pass. It's been properly second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, having we have order. We can move now down to application, uh. M S P twenty one dash zero zero eight, a request for North Augusta Hotel LLC for landscaping and site plan approval. For overnight parking areas on. T M P zero one zero dash one four dash zero three dash zero zero eight for tractor trailers and recreational vehicles. Mr. Paradise, can you bring us up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the concept plan for, um, Sweetwater Commons prohibits the, uh, parking of tractor trailers. R Vs, vehicles like that in in the. Pud. Um, you may remember back on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one or or this year. Uh, you had an application to amend the PUD regulations for this particular parcel. The part, the planning commission passed the resolution amending, um. That. To read to this right here, um. Maybe used for overnight parking tractors, trailers or recreation of vehicles may be allowed for guests of the hotel only and only on a temporary basis. Uh, the storage parking will be adequately screened using both fencing and vegetation and submitted to the planning department as part of the site plan. Well, the planning department has reviewed the site plan and, um, engineering has reviewed the site plan. But the final approval for design and screening, uh, has to be approved by the planning commission. So that is why we are here tonight.
Any questions?
Uh, would you just go over real briefly what, uh. They're gonna do. I understand it's gonna be eight foot width, it's gonna be like a shadow box.
Um, looking at the diagrams, it doesn't look like a shadow box. Um, it looks like you had your two by four rails on the inside. And then your pickets on the outside, it's an eight foot high fence. And then you. Have the, um, bushes, um, on the outside of that fence. The. Um, it's an eight foot tall fence with one by six pickets, supported by three rails of two by fours. Yeah, typical privacy fence. In addition, um, they proposed to plant thirty one dwarf view for holly bushes along the fence line facing the street. And these plants will be fourteen to sixteen inches in height. And the bottom of the trunk will be at least one inch in size.
Pretty much what we asked them to do, other than, you know. I'd like to see maybe a little different kind of materials used as far as the fencing and the, and the plants maybe, but, you know. I, I kinda thought the city might. Have helped them with that. It didn't happen.
Yeah, I, and and I'm not sure, uh, if it may have happened before I came, uh, it didn't happen after I came. Um. But they seem to have done. In general, what the planning commission had asked.
Yeah.
It was my, um, excuse me, it was my understanding that there would be some input, um, with the city, um. That was my understanding. And also within the, um, um. Guidelines or the guidance we were getting, it was only pertaining to that lot, in my, in my.
Correct.
Um, do we have any, um, ability now to, um. Add for shadow boxes that are a, um. Screen?
You could certainly, um, approve it on the condition that the fencing be designed, be changed to shadow boxing. Um. I think that would be in in your. Yeah. I pray that i- i- in your privy, um. Or if you, you, if you wanted to continue it, I I could reach back out to them and see if that's a possibility or a no-go. Um, there there's just several options, however you wanna. Move forward on that.
Um. Commissioner Watts, um, the calipso tree and the growth, um, is that, in your opinion, gonna get us to where we need to be?
Uh, Commissioner Key, the, the problem I see is I I don't know how much room they've got between that fence and the curb line. If they only have like four feet, I don't think you can get like bigger, you know, something bigger than that.
So that'd be ornamental more so than screening?
I just, it's gonna take a long time for there to really be a, uh, screen. Dwarf, birch and holly are probably just local and plant. And it, it'll pop out at six or. Seven feet, you know.
Six, seven feet with an eight foot fence. But it'd be ornamental. What about the whip? These are very, very, very tall. What's your professional opinion, if that's what I'm asking?
Um. That was, that was a somewhat a concern, but I, you know, I don't think it's gonna be. That detrimental, that's a, that's a real hard issue, I think.
Does it need, um, is it something that you prune or it just grows as a ornamental?
They'll probably.
Mr. Chairman? If you would, uh, if if we could speak into the mics, um, some of the people in the room are having trouble hearing y'all. Okay, so. Can't hear you in the room, we're not gonna be able to hear you to take the minutes and stuff, so.
I apologize, um, I I wasn't intending to have a sidebar, um, with, um, Commissioner Watts. Um, we've had this issue that we are trying to assist them with and we wanna make sure that the, um, it is consistent with what we decided months ago. Um, so, um, please accept my apology. Um, any of the commissioners, do y'all have any, um, opinion one way or the other? Whether shadow box or just a regular screening?
I think they did what we asked them to do and the shrubbery is not, it it's just gonna break up the appearance of a great big fence. And I think it's a lot better than a row of semi trucks, so I think they did what we asked them to do.
Haven't heard that, can I get a motion?
Approval of M S P twenty one dash oh oh eight for the. Landscaping. Fencing as requested by the, as it included in this.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner. Motion and a second by Commissioner Carter. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye is having, we have order. Moving to the second line item on the agenda, application R Z M two one. Dash zero zero three, a request by Felix Daniel Mackey to rezone. Three point six seven acres located at one oh two West Martin Town Road. T M P zero zero six dash five dash zero one dash zero two four. From R fourteen large lot, single family residential to R five mixed residential. Mr. Paradise?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and, um, just for clarification, uh, for the public, there's actually two. Zoning applications here. They're similar, but they're separate. One is for the, this one, the three point six, uh, seven acres, more or less. And the other one is for the forty something acres, um, more or less. So, just so everybody's aware of that. Um, this is a request by Felix Daniel Mackey to rezone the three point six seven acres located at ten twenty five West Martin Town Road. From large lot, single family to R five mixed use. Uh, there's currently a single family residence on this lot, um. And the, uh, owner's brother. Now, there's currently a single-family residence on this lot and the owner's brother, Forrest Mackey, is the representative for the other Mr. Mackey and he is here that can probably answer your questions better than I can.
Okay. Do we need to address the commission prior to having a, are we gonna have a public hearing?
Yes, you need a public hearing.
Okay, do you want, you think we need to go ahead and address some of the questions prior to or just go into the public hearing then come afterwards?
I would suggest asking the questions afterwards as they, as additional questions may come up for you during the public hearing portion.
Okay. All right, at this moment in time, we're gonna open a public hearing for said application and during this period of time, we can have any citizen or anyone of interest that want to come down to the podium and speak, if you could, give your name and your address and let us know how you feel. Anyone in the audience want to step down?
Over at one-twenty-one Butler Avenue. Could y'all just explain where this falls in relation to some features on the road there? Is this across from True North or is it across from True North, this side of the Mackey's house? And then there's that brick house kind of sitting down off the road?
It appears if you're facing the Mackey House square?
Uh-huh.
On your right-hand side?
Right-hand side?
Right.
And across the street?
At, no, on the same side of the street as the Mackey House.
Okay, all of this is on the same side over back? Thank you, that's all, I just want to clarify.
Aye.
Ray Boudreaux, eighteen-eighty-four Nobcombe Avenue, appreciate all your information earlier. The question I've got, I'm trying to understand a little better what mixed residential means and I'm closer to the next part that'll come up of the forty-eight acre area, but even with a three-point-six-seven whatever area acre, I'm curious what, you know, what is mixed residential gonna mean for that and again, more so for the other area. I guess I'd pose that as a question first and then, you know, I've got, you know, big reservations about if that turns into, you know, I know mixed residential is a fairly broad definition from what I understand. I'd hate to see, you know, apartment buildings come up where we could have a nice, single-family resident-type neighborhood go in. So I'm kind of curious as to what the plan is besides just changing the zone and what might end up in that area.
Good question. Mr. Paradise, can you elaborate on large lots, small lots, mixed use?
Yes, the large lot, R fourteen and R ten large lot and medium lot, family residential districts, the purpose of those two districts, actually both of them, is to recognize and promote the character of particular areas of North Augusta where single-family residential development is the predominant living environment. Also, changing patterns of work and home environments create incentives to view the single-family dwelling as a place of work and residential living activities. Whereas the R five mixed residential use would say that the purpose of this district is to permit a variety, a variety of residential uses and variable densities based on the character of such uses. Areas so designated or deemed suited to such uses. This designation is applied principally to undeveloped areas where units and density flexibility will not adversely impact existing residential subdivisions and where the housing market can sufficiently meet the various demands of housing. It also applies to existing multifamily and mixed-use residential areas. Now, some of the different uses you had asked me about earlier, Mr. Chairman. The R fourteen, which is zone now, allows single-family detached as a primary use. It allows a bed and breakfast by special exception and it allows a tourist home as a permitted use. The R five allows a duplex, a multifamily dwelling, which typically you think of as apartments, patio homes, a quadruplex. Room rating more than four tenants is a conditional use. Room rating no more than four tenants is permitted. Single-room occupancy unit is permitted. Single-family detached dwelling is permitted. Townhouses are permitted. A triplex is permitted. A zero-lot line home is permitted. A bed and breakfast is allowed by special exception. A boarding house is a conditional use. Dormitories are a conditional use. A group homes for non-exempt from zoning is permitted and housing services for the elderly, including assisted living services, retirement housing services, congregate living services, life care or continuing care services, skilled nursing services, rest homes or homes for the ages is a permitted use and tourist homes is a permitted use. And that's the bulk of it, Mr. Chairman.
My concern as a citizen and longtime resident of North Augusta is that what, the options, the potential options with that kind of development would, I don't know, in my personal opinion, kind of degrade what, you know, what North Augusta is to me. You know, I've been here thirty-five years and it used to be what I like, a lot of people I guess call a sleepy little town and that's was always the charm of it and progress is great. I love, you know, a lot of the things that's come out of the progress, but we've grown into this bigger city now and like I said, I would kind of hate to see, you know, beautiful property like that go up into any, you know, single-family homes are one thing, but a myriad of whatever other kind of development and I think it would have an impact on the residential neighborhoods in the area. Nobcombe Avenue is already a, you know, a busy, traveled street. That property, I know we're not talking about that one yet, but we start changing all these to multifamily, multifamily or mixed residential and that just continues on down Nobcombe. I see that having a huge impact on the neighborhoods in that area. Again, I'm, you know, just a citizen, but I see that doing that. So that's, I guess, just my opinion on that whole thing.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Paradise, I know it's not one part of this, but across Nobcombe from the forty-eight acre parcel is the new P U D area that's behind the Waffle House or whatever. What's the zoning for that housing wise?
I would have, I don't have that off the top of my head. Yeah, I would have to go to the concept plan and see what was approved there. There is a mix, I believe, of some, of course, there's some commercial involved there and some housing and I don't know how much of that may be multifamily, townhomes or detached. I just don't know what that makeup is off the top of my head.
Exhibit A shows this P D.
Correct, it's own P D, yes. I just don't know, not that familiar with the particular concept plan.
I think at some point we approved an apartment complex that it never got finalized. It would never happen.
Do we have anyone else want to come forward?
This wasn't exactly how I expected this to run. I thought we would do the larger piece first or whatever, but I am Forrest Mackey and this is my brother's and I'm his representative. We're not, we're not headed into the rental market, that's not our, not our things we've been involved in the past. And I mean, I don't, we're not trying to get in the rental business or whatever. I mean, that's just, it may happen at some point in time, but that's not our interest at all.
In your making the request for the zoning change, what are your intentions? What do you?
I think everything that Tommy, we pride ourselves in being high-end builders and doers or whatever. My house sits in the middle of this, my house is not part of this rezoning. I don't want junk by my house. I mean, that's just all it is to it. I'm after high-quality stuff and, I mean, that's what we're about and we're just doing high-quality things, not, we're not, I'm not looking for a tract development. I mean, we're just, what's happening is that there's more and more demand in that corridor right now and we, we're just trying to figure out which direction we're going to head in. The biggest, and it's like I said, this is all backwards in my way of thinking, that I thought we were gonna do the largest tract first, but it doesn't matter, but I mean, both, both, all of it goes together, so to speak. It, like I said, we're, it has gotten to the point that because of the noise factor and all the commercial changes that have happened out there, you know, forty years ago, yeah, this might be a large tract development. I mean, you know, there's significant noise there, there's tons of commercial encroachment or, not encroachment, but you know, coming that way. We don't really want commercial stuff around our house, we're just after having the ability to do things that would reduce noise, where you can develop it, you know, per se, but we're not, this is not, we're not talking tract development, I mean, that's not us and not there. I mean, this property has been in my family three hundred years, my immediate family has owned it for eighty-five years, I'm almost seventy years old, I've lived there my entire life except when I was in college. I mean, we're not about making messes and I consider some of, you know, I just, we're after high-quality stuff, plain stuff. And at this point in time, I mean, I, I thought there was gonna be a lot of rental stuff on the other side of Nobcombe, I mean, we're just not, that's just, that's not what we're after at this point in time at all.
Any questions, do you have any questions from Mr. Mackey while he's standing?
Our thing is, is that, we were sitting down in my notes and this, is that what we're trying, what we want to create is a village atmosphere. I mean, this, this, I mean, my family's so old-school, this is like sacred, okay? This is sacred land, okay? And I was totally offended when I saw that we're gonna name a street Cork Tree Street. All the portraits here that are in this area came out of my yard and I mean, this is, I mean, we've gone around a long, long time. I mean, you can look at my home and how we do that, the kind of business we do, I, we're not, we're after high-quality stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, that's, you know, you know, my business is real messed up right now. I mean, we live in a, I tell people, if you want to be lied to, just ask me something and anything I tell you in like thirty seconds, you know, I can say, yeah, we can do that, can't get any wood, can't do anything, you know? So I really don't know, I don't know, but I will say this, whatever we do, whether I do it or someone else does it, I mean, we're gonna, it's gonna be very stringent, it ain't gonna be just how to put a sign, we're not in the sign putting up business anyway. It's not that kind of thing, it's gonna be, we're gonna tell you what we want and you can either do it or we'll find someone, you know what I'm saying, someone that will.
You project to do this in the next five years or is this just?
Probably so. I mean, the situation is, is that I have gotten older, just all of, you know, and I'm getting at the end of my career and this is the most important piece of property we own and I, I want it done right, this is what my education is in, I've spent my entire working career in these realms and this one's gonna be special and I'm going after a, we want it to be a village and that's, that's what we're shooting for. But the thing is, it's like, it gets to the point that because of the intense level of traffic, you know, and, and noise and whatever, it's just not, you don't want to build a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house unless it's an I-20. You may, but I don't, I mean, you know what I'm saying? And I have, I have to and it's fine and I'm used to it, but I mean, that's just not an appropriate use of the land anymore.
You kind of see it as like a T and D type thing?
Do what?
Traditional neighborhood development type?
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah, I mean, but I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have mixed-use stuff and, and I mean, that's how I see it, it's, you know, mixed-use, I mean, you know, when we say townhouses, everybody goes, wow, town, well, you know, there's million-dollar townhouses, I mean, we don't, you know, it's just, we're just looking at doing upper-end stuff. Something that will enhance property values, not reducing.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the? Second?
Second.
Hearing is officially closed. Now we can go and kind of get the commissioner's sentiments on the developments. Do y'all have any comments and I can kind of chime in?
First, I think that, you know, Mr. Mackey has very good points, has very good points and that, you know, that family has owned this property for as long as, you know, there's been people here and, well, European people here. And he's got, one of the, I think, one of the most significant historical houses in the city of North Augusta and I can't see, I can't see them messing that up, really, I can't. I don't think it's, I don't think the money's that important to them and, you know, if it were my property and I were in today's times, I would probably be asking for the same zone and I think it's really an appropriate zone and done well, it could be a real asset for the city. So I think it's, I think it's, I think I'll vote for it, yes.
But Mr. Bigga?
Yeah, my opinion, having grown up in the adjacent colony neighborhood with the, you know, R fourteen zoning, you know, it's a, it's a great neighborhood. Unfortunately, most of what we see in new development is moving towards the lesser, tighter zoning and that's why I was asking about the P D development across the street. I'm not sure how dense that's gonna be. Again, I respect what the Mackys have done, you know, I live in one of their other neighborhoods currently, but my personal opinion is that, you know, I'd like to see this still stay R fourteen and something be done that's complementary to the, you know, the adjacent colony and the property that's there.
Any comments? Commissioner Carter?
The only comments I would have would be, do we know yet if there will be any sort of ingress-degress directly off of Martin Town or will it all be off of Nobcombe? There's too much to tell, haven't got that far yet. And I was just curious to know once again if it was gonna be apartments or townhouses or if it's gonna be more of a traditional neighborhood, so that was my only questions and concerns. I agree with everything around it is R fourteen, it's kind of tough to change the surroundings, but then you've got the P D on the other side of Nobcombe, you've also got the church right across the street. So you do have sort of a mixed use in and around those areas, so I'm not sure that I can honestly say. So I'm not sure that, uh, I can honestly say that they are, um, to have it inside the question. That's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, five, excuse me.
My time to talk? Whenever things like this are brought before the planning commission, we have rules that we follow, um, in trying to make a decision. It is not how oftentimes we, um, dictate how we feel about certain things. But, um, our lived experiences, um, always have a play in our decision-making. And, um, so I, I normally just look through some, um, some of the criteria used in, in making the decision. Um, and it has, um, when you're looking at this, uh, map up here, at the lower yellows, um, you've got the, um, small lots. And at the top yellow, if you can kind of see the size of lot a little bit, um, larger. And it's asking, um, and, and we don't know this until the houses are, um, or the development is coming to, um, coming to fruition, um, is it going to fit? Small lots, um, would small lots fit? Could it architecturally, um, mimic the other houses even though you may not have, um, egress to that particular neighborhood? I don't know if interconnectivity could be matched, so it probably will have its own way of getting in, either from, um, Martin Town Road or Nob Cone. And I, and, and I always, um, look at, um, the times in which we're living and the economics that we're living in. We can, we can keep things kind of how they are and economically, um, they may not work. And so they sit, sit, sit. Or we can kind of change with the time with the safeguards that we have in our zoning to try to, um, um, make sure that we keep development, um, going forward. And so, um, I just stumbled through some of my notes and, um, it says, um, um, are there any, um, effects or, um, capacity of safety involved in that? And I'm trying to say is, um, by changing the zoning to, um, um, small lots, are we gonna have any, um, hazards? And I'm trying to figure out if, um, are there any hazards? Um, are there gonna be some traffic issues? Yeah, probably gonna be some traffic issues. But when they put their development in there, they're gonna have to have, um, um, a traffic study. They're gonna have to have either, um, if it's too much traffic based on the number of, um, um, lots and the trip, um, count, uh, they may have to have acceleration lane or these, the acceleration lanes or, um, lower the, um, lot count. Um, I've been, um, raised here in North Augusta, um, since three, I'm sixty-two years old. And, um, I used to could drive from my house all the way down, um, to the shopping center. And I live, um, by, uh, on top of the, um, um, Highway twenty-five, I'm by the, I'm by the eateries. And, um, I used to ride all the way down and not even have to get off the road on my bike. And, um, that's going. North Augusta and the amount of traffic in which we have, um, we're gonna have to keep engineering, um, how are we going to deal with the traffic? And, um, you know, it's not gonna stop. And a lot of folks, um, with the new high school and what's going on on our side of the river, um, trying to squeeze in here. So we're having pressure in trying to do the right thing so the traffic is not gonna, um, um, gonna stop. We're gonna have to manage it for any development in which we, um, um, in which we have. So having said that, um, I'm, I'm looking for the negatives in, um, changing it. And, um, I'm not, um, necessarily coming up with a whole bunch of negative other than, um, we're getting more houses in based on economic times. When I'm faced with this, with an unknown quantity of the owner, um, sometime I ask the question, um, because I don't know the person. And Mr. Mackey, I don't know personally, but, um, um, I know of his family and his wife and her sentiments, um, that I wouldn't think he's here to harm the city. And can he get it changed and sell it? Yeah, he can do that. Um, he'll be living in the, in the middle of whomever he sold it to. So it's not even a trust factor that I have, um, or not a trust factor. I just don't have any negative to tell him, um, and his company and his family that, um, there's enough negatives to, um, to, um, vote no. Having said that, um, can we get a motion? And this motion is gonna be make a recommendation to the city council, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Then it'll go, uh, from, you'll make a recommendation tonight and then it'll go to the city council and they'll be, uh, they'll vote on it twice.
Um, and, and, and let me make a note to the citizens that are here. Um, we're making a planning, um, decision. The city council is the one that will approve it. So therefore you've got to turn it back two more times, um, if you feel that, um, our decision making is inappropriate. They are the politicians, we are, um, the planners.
I would make a motion that we approve, um, application RZM twenty-one dash zero-zero-three for the rezoning of three-point-seven acres on this Martin Town Road from R-fourteen large lot single-family residential to R-five mixed residential.
Having heard the motion, can I get a second? Got a second? All in favor? Can we signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I have it. And we have, was there any opposed? None opposed. Opposed? Four and one, four, four, one opposed. This does seem a little bit, um, in reverse. Now we're doing, um, we're at the point of application RZM two-one dash zero-zero-four, a request for Felix Daniel Mackey and Forrest Thomas Mackey to rezone forty-eight acres, forty-eight point four-two acres located in West Martin Town Road, TMP zero-zero-six, zero-five, zero-one, zero-zero-one, from R-fourteen large lot, single-family residential to R-five mixed residential. Did I misspeak? Have any questions before we, um, go into, um, our hearing? Can I get a motion to open the hearing? Second? We can officially open up our, um, hearing for the, um, forty-eight point four-two acres to be rezoned. Um, can we, can we have any, um, citizens like to come forth, give their name and their address and their sentiments?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Kance, I live in the Colony at nineteen oh eight Riley Court, North Augusta. Thank you for letting me speak tonight and let you, sharing my views with you. I do have some concerns about the rezoning of the neighborhood, of into a neighborhood. There's several points. One is the safety. At this point, as everyone knows, North Augusta High School has grown tremendously over the last few years, making the roads on Martin Town and Nob Cone excessively busy during the times of school or events that are held there. It also affects the local subdivisions which become cut-through roads. By developing this land, it would just make more people, more houses, and what he's saying is he'd like it to do in a nice way, but he could, it could be sold and then once it's rezoned, it could be apartments, it could be anything with a lot of people. And at this point, we have no idea where they'll be emptying out onto Martin Town or Nob Cone, adding to the traffic flow. In addition, with the, um, building of True North Church across the street from it, traffic has raised considerably from that. Uh, North Augusta Public Safety has done a wonderful job in trying to help with that when they have events which are services regularly, concerts as well as programs, and helping the traffic to get out of the parking lot there. But when public safety is there, the traffic coming out can only turn right towards the Colony. And what happens with that is people who want to go in the other direction can't. So they come through and the Colony being the first subdivision or road on their left, they either cut through the subdivision, go to the first turn, which would be Riley Court, and take a U-turn, or they simply take U-turns right in front of the subdivision so they can turn, go back where they would like to go. This makes it very unsafe and nearly impossible for people to come out on Burns Avenue to take a left if it's at any of these times. This is increased traffic. And again, with that zoning change, we have no way of knowing how many people would be living there and adding to more construct, more, more traffic on that road, in addition to the growth of North Augusta. The other concern I have is the sound, the noise. At this point, we can hear in the Colony, this high school, we hear the bands, we hear the football, we hear the events, which, and sometimes it's really nice to share that with them. And now with True North, we also hear they are broadcasting their services outdoors on speakers, where we hear the concerts and their services that are regularly held. With this rezoning, the natural buffer, the natural green that is back in that area could very likely all be taken down. And then the sound would even travel louder. And that would affect the enjoyment and the, of the people living in the surrounding area. So for these reasons, for the safety of the people and the traffic, for the enjoyment of the current citizens who have lived here in a long time and enjoyed our beautiful city, I wish y'all would consider the changes that will be or proposed tonight. Like to thank y'all for letting me speak tonight, and I know you do your best in helping our city to grow, but then maintaining a safe and enjoyable neighborhood and atmosphere for those of us who live here. Thank you.
Stephen Bryant, one-twenty-nine Butler Avenue. Uh, probably should have got it up before you had voted on the last one, this might be mute. But you remember about five, six years ago, I came before this commission with the property where the current fire station is going and developer wanted to do townhomes, it was R-five. My suggestion was to take out the multifamily and the high-density component with the townhomes and patio homes. And that might have alleviated some of what Mr. Mackey said probably won't go in there. But I do, I like his idea of a town center. I think with a town center, it should be more zoned as a PD. That gives you as a planning commission more control of how it's developed. It also gives the owner flexibility. But should he sell the property, you will still be able to dictate buffers to protect the adjacent owners and, and locations of drives and things of that nature. It just, it just, I think it protects both parties equally. And if it ends up being a town center, I think, I think it may end up being a, a, a positive thing as opposed to just R-five, sell it to somebody and they slap in fifty-foot wide lots. With a PD which is adjacent to it, it makes sense for it to stay P, be PD because PD's next to it. But now you're, you're putting in an R-five in between an R-fourteen and a PD, and it, I don't think it's gonna mesh as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Make good draw eighteen eighty-four Nob Cone Avenue. Uh, I appreciate the information that you provided and what your, your vision of it, of, of that area. And it sounds, sounds nice and, and I know you've got some great neighborhoods in, in North Augusta. And, and so I'm not, definitely not knocking anything that you, you've got envisioned. What, what definitely worries me though is you talking about you being kind of toward the end of your, you know, building career and the possibility that this could get sold. If this becomes R-five, then the doors open for whoever would currently own it to do anything they wanted. And Mr. Watts, not to, you know, there's nothing personal, but at the point that you made was that, well, I don't see it happening that way. Sadly, in retrospect, that's, sadly, that's said a lot of times in retrospect, well, we never saw that coming. You know, to me, this just kind of opens the door. You know, there will be no control over, you know, I say no control, you know, within the R-five, uh, it, it, it could be anything, you know, after it's out of Mr. Mackey's control or whoever ends up developing that area. So I, I think it's still, you know, I, I still voice my opposition to changing the zone because then, like I said, it is, it could be anything. It could be, yeah, single-family homes or it could be apartment complexes. It'll be up to whoever owns it at the time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So maybe.
Second? And motion and second, that the public hearing is closed and it stands closed. Any discussion?
Clarity. Tommy, I, I don't know what you, what you're in that area of time. As I recall, the state of South Carolina does not allow any new PDs that we're trying to get rid of them because it wasn't working. And we got them and we have, we can use them up. But I, my understanding is you cannot create another PD, you know?
Uh, Mr. Clark, I think what you're referring to is a Supreme Court decision that changed how the, um, planned developments were done in South Carolina. And basically, the state Supreme Court said that there has to be a component of commercial in any PUD. So, um, yeah, that, that is one of the requirements from that Supreme Court decision.
So if this were PD, there would have to be some percentage of commercial?
Yes, of course.
Do we know what that percentage is?
That, that's, that would be up to the developer and planning commission and council.
Could I ask Mr. Mackey a question?
Mr. Mackey, can you come back to the podium?
Mr. Mackey, what, uh, what was your, uh, decision to go R-five rather than, you know, PUD or planned development?
I kind of thought the same thing that Bob Clark was talking about, that it was kind of on the outs. I don't, I don't have any other thing is, is everything we do there has to be approved by the city of North Augusta, regardless of who owns it. I mean, you have to submit plans, they have to be approved or whatever. And it has been my experience over the years, and I've been involved in this for forty-five years, that if you, every time, if, when you come with a PUD, you know what I'm saying? If you come with a PUD, then that's just like getting it all rezoned again with every segment that you bring. Where with this, you're going, here's what we can do, we can't do anything else. We're gonna submit it to the city and there won't be any problem. Because in the past, I mean, we all know in the past, it's been a, I mean, it, it changes from time to time, the involvement level of planning and how things go. And I mean, it, we've had times in this city where you actually couldn't do anything.
I know that there's been a lot of times when PUDs have come before us and they were, they were not, no longer legal since the Supreme Court.
Yeah, I mean, so, so I mean, that's why, that's why we chose to go down this road. It allowed us flexibility to do stuff, um, that we felt would, you know, work into a village concept, you know? And that's why we went this way. And where the PUD was just like, basically, everything you do is conditional. Instead of being, you know, when the court says that you can do it, everything, everything's conditional because every time you have to basically rezon everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Any other thoughts or? Um, Mr. Paradise, can you, can you kind of walk us down, um, Mrs. Kance was speaking about, um, you know, the safety, the growth, um, the sound, um, the trip count? What's, give us an idea on the process? So we, so even if it was a, a R-fourteen instead of an R-five, what would be the process, um, that we would have to get this development started? And what are some of the controls or mechanisms we will have to kind of assure that it's gonna be a good project?
Regardless of the, um, zoning district, when they came in with the development plan for this, I would foresee a, a sub, major subdivision with them putting in roads, infrastructure. So both staff would review, planning staff would review it, engineering staff would review it, stormwater staff would review it, um, and make sure that all of those, um, were, um, in good standing. It would come to the planning commission, uh, for final approval with a public hearing at preliminary, for the preliminary plat. And if it is a, um, if it is a de- development that...
And if it is a, um, if it is a de- development that initiates fifty new trips per day in the peak hours, it, a traffic impact analysis is required. And then as part of that subdivision approval, um, the requirements from that traffic impact analysis, um, any improvements could be a condition on the approval of that subdivision.
So in other words, if it, um, started becoming pretty dense, then we're gonna have some issues that gonna have to be dealt with as far as the traffic is concerned, deceleration lanes, acceleration lanes, um, traffic lights, so potentially. So you, you can't all willy-nilly, uh, put up an apartment building and increase the.
Correct, and, correct. And, um, the traffic impact analysis would be key there. Um, the other key factor, um, is to have the developer pay for any of those improvements so it doesn't get passed along to the general taxpayer.
So in North Augusta, we're very much promoting, um, sidewalks, sidewalks, tree caliper, um, the standard, um, um.
Yes, sidewalks would be, would be required probably in the neighborhood as well as street trees. And then as each, um, dwelling is completed, uh, there's a landscape inspection on that home. Uh, it has to have, uh, ten percent of shade, I believe it is, um, on that lot. So there's some criteria as far as the landscaping that's required as well.
Buffers.
There are buffers that are required, it depends on the circumstances, what the adjacent property is and what you're developing, um, as to whether a buffer would be required or not. You know, if you have a single-family detached backing up a single-family detached, you don't need a buffer. But if it is, you know, high-density, uh, going up to a single-family residential, yes, a buffer would be required.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any comments?
I'd like to make one comment, just as a general, um, just to throw out as a general observation, being on the planning commission for a long time, um, you know, a lot of times we have citizens, and I don't mean to hurt anybody's feelings, that, uh, that don't want us to allow something to be built on this property when it's really appropriate that it could be built. And, you know, for us not to allow something like that, it's, it's basically regulatory taking, which we can't do. So sometimes we have to, you know, think, okay, you know, is this, is this really gonna be a detriment to the community or to somebody's safety? And, you know, I would, I think you'd be stretched hard to come down to the point of figuring that this was gonna be a, a safety issue or, um, or Mr. Mackey does not have the right to do this on his property. Uh, just, just a general thing that we have to, that goes through our mind when we make these decisions.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just, again, go back on record, uh, as I did on the, the prior parcel. Uh, again, this is, it's a beautiful property, uh, it's, it's, it's one of the gateways we see, you know, as you come up off of exit one, off that exit ramp and, and merge, uh, by the time you catch your breath coming into traffic, the first time, first thing you look up is you see this, you know, this, this property that's right there at that intersection. Um, as you're catching your breath blowing past the Waffle House and so forth. So a- again, my interest is just in making sure it's the gateway, you know, in and, and with all the traffic that we've already got on Nobcon, that we just keep that, um, at the, the, the largest density possible. And I, and I, you know, fully believe that, uh, that the Mackey's intentions are, you know, a hundred percent, uh, you know, in making this a beautiful property, but, you know, what we can't control is something happens and they sell the property in, in five or ten years and, and, uh, you know, and, and the only way to make money is, is, you know, apartment complexes and townhomes and, and we've then overloaded that, that corner in our entry into, into North Augusta with, uh, um, something that might not be as, as pretty as, you know, what could be developed as it, with it as an R fourteen. So, just my opinion.
Any other comments?
What is the timeline for the signal at Nobcon? I know it's on the list, I just can't find in my notes when it's gonna be placed. And I know Tom, you probably wouldn't know because I'm, and I don't know if anybody, one of the other commissioners might know when, which phase that hit.
I know we have to put it up towards the top.
I think we moved it towards the top, didn't we? That's all.
Mr. Bryant, um, um, brought up the, um, idea of a, um, PD, um, and we kind of batted it, um, about. And, um, um, I like, um, uh, uh, I like the PD. Um, and the reason being is, um, it gives the planning commission control. Um, and, um, I, I, I trust, um, what folks tell me, um, but it's always trust and verify. Um, and once we do change it, um, or don't change it, um, it then is kinda out of our hands. So for transparency's sake, um, I would prefer having a lot more control, um, and assure certain things. But in planning, um, it's kinda like taking a long trip. You're gonna have some bends in the road and you wish you could drive straight, but it, it's, it's not possible. So, um, um, I, I, I particularly, um, like, um, PDs because it gives us a certain amount of control as, as, um, planners. Um, so I did wanna say that. I am concerned about safety. Um, I come out of, um, Old Plantation Road and, um, it's difficult getting out. Um, and, um, it was stated in one hour of studies that we may have to make that a right turn only. So, um, if we make that a right turn only, coming, coming through the, um, firecracker stands, then I will come up, then be looking to go to Nobcon and circle back around, um, just like, um, Mrs. Cantz was saying. So things are changing for everybody in North Augusta and we've got, there's some of this traffic, um, safety. Um, hopefully we don't have to have, um, ten accidents before, um, state of South Carolina decides to, um, step up their efforts and, um, re-engineer some of our roads. Um, the growth factor, um, uh, it's on the table. Um, uh, people are trying to squeeze into North Augusta. Um, I'm in mortgage banking, a lot of folks in the Evans area and the, um, Martinez area, um, they're being squeezed with the traffic. Um, and you take your life in your hands on the upper end of, of watching the road during rush hour. So, um, you know, things are just changing in North Augusta. So we got the sound, the growth, the, the safety, the trip count. Um, I am having to believe in the system that we, um, have certain amount of, um, safety precautions, um, to assist in making sure that, um, a developer just doesn't run, run rampant and we end up with a mess. Um, so, I mean, I'm concerned, but, um, the highest and best use may not be, um, acre lots or half-acre lots, um, in that area. So I'm tending to fall on the side of a mile or two. Um. Having said that, um, can I get a motion for a recommendation to the city?
All right, I move approval, a request for rezoning, this is, this is, um, R Z M twenty-one zero zero four from fourteen to five.
We got a motion on the floor. Properly second. All in favor, signified by seeing a aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes?
Aye.
Ayes, have it, we have order. Next on the agenda is application, R Z M two-one dash zero zero five, a request by the city of North Augusta to rezon. Mr. Paradise?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is significantly different than the last rezoning. Uh, the previous rezoning request, you didn't know what was going there. On this one, everybody in town knows what would be going on that parcel if it is rezoned. And this is a request, uh, by the city of North Augusta to rezon plus minus four point four, five acres. It, and it's three parcels there, twelve oh eight Georgia Avenue, um, that is zoned general commercial, uh, twelve twenty Georgia Avenue, that's R fourteen large lot, single-family, and twelve twenty and a half Georgia Avenue, that's also on, uh, zoned R fourteen large lot, single-family. Um, this, the rezoning request, request the, um, that it be rezoned to public use. Uh, you see the current zoning map, which is on my left, and the, uh, future land use plan on the right. You'll notice that the future land use plan for that quarter calls for mixed use going forward. The, um, the public use, um, uh, zoning district, um, means that this is also a neighborhood preservation district, overlay district. The public use zoning would negate that restrictions on the property. However, I think Mr. Clifford is gonna explain to you how the city has tried to, um, adhere to as many of those requirements as possible, um, so that it fits in as well as it could. There is a lot of conceptual things, it's still in draft form. Uh, the planning commission, so we don't get on a rabbit trail. The role for the planning, um, commission is it either make a recommendation to rezon it to be public or make a recommendation not to rezon it to be public. Um, and that is, uh, kinda where we stand, Mr. Chairman. I'll let Mr. Clifford pick it up from there if that's all right with you, sir.
That'd be great.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, I'm Jim Clifford representing the city of North Augusta at one hundred Georgia Avenue, North Augusta, South Carolina, two nine eight four one, as the current city administrator. So at the sketch plan review before this body, uh, I believe I was directed to address three major concerns, uh, from the commissioners. One, the exterior design of the building was not in keeping with, uh, the neighborhood and was of concern to both nearby residents and the commissioners. Two, uh, traffic increase in the neighborhood. And three, that other properties be examined in lieu of the Georgia Avenue properties. Since the sketch plan review, the city has held a public input session and a number of the members of the audience were in attendance at that session on the twelfth of August, uh, some of whom were opposed to this action, some of whom were supportive and some who may be neutral. The results of the sketch plan review and the public input session were presented to the city council on the sixteenth of August, where the council voted on the action to submit for P public zoning in a unanimous resolution. So to address the items of the sketch plan review, I'll take those in order. So the first, we had a meeting with several residents about design ideas and we will continue to take their inputs into account. So hopefully I learned from my last, uh, at-bat here with the planning commission. Do you all have a copy, um, digitally or on board of the, the current rendering? If you do not, I'll be happy to provide those at this time, hard copy. Mr. Cliff, you airballed. So what you see here before you on the screen and also in your hands is a first draft conceptual drawing based on some of the feedback we had, uh, from our citizens, uh, from the planning commission, from some of the city council members. Uh, and again, this is not necessarily the final design or the final look of the building, but this was done to incorporate some of the Georgian column elements, uh, within the neighborhood. And so I think we've been able to accomplish some of that here, uh, understanding the constraints that we have to not, uh, change the interior of the building based on the level of design that had already been completed. In addition to the exterior design, uh, the council was interested in Mr. Leverett's idea, uh, about a green space, uh, or overlook. Uh, and we will try to incorporate that aspect into the site plan if we move forward on the site. On the second item, uh, there's a draft, uh, traffic study attached, uh, for your consideration. Uh, but yes, I think it is fair to say there will be more vehicle or traffic on both Butler and Observatory uh, based on the public building at that location. And as we refine our planning, we will incorporate traffic calming as possible. And lastly, for the third item, the council guidance to myself was to not consider non-city-owned properties for the new public safety headquarters. The council heard directly from citizens on other options to include leasing options and chose not to investigate those further. The council also provided guidance to not impact the community center. Based on the major drainage features on the community center property, the staff and the engineers did not feel anywhere else on that property was a viable option for public safety headquarters. And so this leads us back where we are today, which the only two options going forward is either East Buena Vista or the Georgia Avenue properties, which I have before you. My recommendation to the council and to this body remains the same, that the placement of the public safety headquarters on the Georgia Avenue properties based on the overall cost, future expandability and location within the city is the best way going forward. And so, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I'm prepared to answer any of your questions at this time.
We were presented with a, um, a traffic study.
Yes, sir.
Is the individual, are you, you gonna address the traffic study? Or did you have the professional identity that's gonna address it?
I'm a long way from, uh, being a civil engineer, commissioner, uh, chairman, so I did bring a, our traffic representative to be able to speak to the, uh, commission tonight, if that's the wish of the commission.
That is the wish.
Okay.
I was trying to read through it and nothing to compare it with and, um, it was above my pay grade too.
After seeing the, uh, previous presentations, I'm very surprised I was called up here to, you know, the, uh, I was asked to do a preliminary assessment, kind of give a, what we would consider like a ten thousand foot view of what's gonna go on here, uh, based on where the site is. You got four access points to Butler Avenue, with it, uh, go to Martin Town as well as Georgia Avenue and also Observatory for the same issue. Uh, by, uh, talking to my staff and things like that, looked like it was about, there's a shift change, about thirty people coming in and twenty going out, I kinda routed it up to thirty-two. Um, based on the locations, about equal distribution, probably about twenty-five percent coming from all four directions up, uh, you know, southeast and west on, uh, the two roads. I mean, that is the major intersection within, within North Augusta, I mean, it's pretty much ground zero. Um, from, from that, it was, you know, you're looking about eight cars coming in the east direction. They split up from one of the four, you know, for each one of the roadways, it's, you know, you know, and I, I don't live there, but I mean, there's an increase in traffic, but I mean, you're probably looking at about, you know, one car every ten minutes, um, in the morning peak hour, which would be probably the biggest issue, um, same thing in the evening. Um, you know, it's a minor impact, it doesn't really meet, um, any kind of, uh, deceleration lanes or anything along Georgia Avenue or Martin Town. Um, the only thing that I would, from my site visits out there, the issue that I would, would have or concern would have with site distance at the intersections coming out of Georgia Avenue as well as, as Martin Town, there's some fencing, some overgrown vegetation, which I'm sure would be, uh, addressed as part of this development. And of course pedestrian access ADA facilities along the same route.
So did you take into account, other than employees, the, um, visitation?
It, yeah, I mean, you do, but, uh, typically that's, that's throughout the day. I'm looking at, you know, when you're looking at, uh, like a traffic impact, you would look at the peak hour, you know, what's, what's gonna happen at rush hour, a lot of that stuff happens after that. You know, there is gonna be a steady traffic, you know, because it is a public use building. It's similar to this, you know, you're gonna have people coming in and out, but you know, during the, the time when the employees are leaving or there's shift change, when the majority of them are coming in and leaving, that's, that's when you're gonna have your most impact. And that's typically where you'd focus on as far as the traffic impact study to address improvements. But, uh, throughout the day, you know, it's, 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 there, there is gonna be somewhat of a steady stream of activity out there.
So what I'm trying to compare, um, traffic, um, um, I'm trying to compare it to something, um, so when you say a thousand cars, uh, or, um, twelve hundred and forty trips, um, that, that really doesn't mean anything to me, um, is, is, is that, how busy is that? That seems to be pretty, um...
If you look at a typical, like a subdivision main, main street, that would, that could handle about four thousand to six thousand vehicles a day. I mean, just from a capacity standpoint, I'm not saying quality of life, or if you lived over there, that that's what you would want, but, uh, from a, from a development standpoint, I mean, this is from, as far as traffic, this is a pretty low impact as far as traffic volume standpoint.
So you're not going to see any, um, acceleration or deceleration lanes? You're just saying it's turn off of, just turn off of, um, Georgia Avenue right into the, um...
Right, yes, yeah, I mean, based on the, the criteria that, I think, uh, South Carolina DOT sets forth.
Just like the, um, post office and the, um, graphics place and all the other places?
Yes, uh, yeah, unfortunately, you know, if you have a, uh, a five lane facility, it's centered left turn lane, seven Butler Avenue, um, it's, when that curve comes in, there's a little narrower area there, um, yeah, from, you know, as far as what you have volume wise, it would trigger the deceleration line, you know.
So if I'm coming up Georgia and the avenue is going to make a turn in left, um, and doesn't it not be closing, is there going to be, um, uh, suicide lane to getting in to turn in?
Traffic, we call that a flush median, so, but, uh, but there, there's already one at, at Observatory, um, you know, where George Av- or the, um, Butler Avenue is. It's a little tight in there, um, you know, it's, it's not impossible, uh, but it, it doesn't trigger, you know, the, the volume one for that.
So is your, so is your, um, professional opinion that, um, it's not going to be anything that's going to be, um, unsightly or, um, difficult to manage? Is that what you're saying, just based on your study and the trip count that you're giving us?
Yeah, I mean, this, as far as the, the aesthetics of the building, that's beyond like my scope or expertise, I mean, but, uh, and my wife would have a very bad opinion of what I think looks good. But as far as from a capacity standpoint, what, how it impacts, I think it, you know, you look at the total volume out there, this would be a drop in the bucket, to be honest with you. But there, those roads are quiet roads, so there is going to be a slight increase in traffic on there, you know, some, some volume and activity on those roadways, that's not true.
Have any questions?
If we look at, are, did you, in your study, was it strictly the, uh, count of cars coming in and out? Did you take in consideration, um, like the curve on Georgia Avenue, that kind of thing? Yeah, I mean, this, this was not a detailed study at this point. I mean, this is just to kind of give a preliminary assessment, okay? Here's, you got the volume, what do you see going on on these roadways? As you get into like, you know, some survey and some de- some detailed, you know, as far as actually getting counts out there, I used what South Carolina DOT has available on their website, um, which is, is probably fairly accurate. I think they've, they've got some fairly recent counts out there. But this, I mean, this would not be a, a study that I would submit, like as, as far as like a submittal. I mean, this is more to give you, you know, give my client, you know, the ability to plan for, okay, here's the improvement you may be able to expect so that they, for budgeting purposes, as well as to give an overview in a, in a public setting like this, to kind of either ease or alleviate some fears or, or answer the questions, but, uh, but from a, an overall volume standpoint, during the peak hour, this is, it's, it's a fairly small impact.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Can we get a motion to move into a public hearing?
Send it.
Second.
Stand motion and, uh, properly second, uh, we're moving to our, um, public hearing. Here again, um, if we have anyone that would like to, um, come down and speak, and if you would, give me your name and your address, and address any concerns. The time.
Okay.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Sharon Reed, nineteen forty-two, Bolin Road. Um, I believe, um, you may be in receipt of my letter by email. So you may already know kind of where I stand. The letter was fairly strong, um, but I'd like to address a couple of the things that have been said tonight. First, I'm a little confused by your statement that we didn't know where we stood, or didn't know what was going to be built on, um, we didn't know what would go on that property the last time we came to rezonate, and we knew what would go on that property. It was going to be public safety and the fire station, and we had some plans. That was my understanding, and I was in those meetings.
Um, you address it, Chair.
Yes, sir. Um, so we didn't, back in two thousand eighteen, is I believe what you, uh, was the last time we met on this rezoning. We, I believe that we did know what was going on that property, and at that point, it was double, so to speak, what was going on, what is going on it now. What I see in this plan, and what I, what I believe I know about it, is that we're talking about a courthouse, a jail, a police station. So we're talking about a significant amount of traffic. And I have, I do have some questions about the number of parking spaces, and how we could have a hundred and thirty-some parking spaces that we've heard talked about, to accommodate the public and still have green space. That's confusing to me, because I've looked at the parking spaces from an aerial, the ones that do exist there now, and there's only a handful, and a large amount of the property is taken up. So I'm thinking kind of all pavement. We did have a little bit of difficulty hearing the traffic study, but, um, I don't think it's going to be a negligible increase, unfortunately. I think it would be a significant increase. I share the concern of that blind curve. You know, if it were just the employees working, that would be, what, a third of the size, and it, this is a public facility, and I think that's what we're looking at. We're looking at turning something in the historic district by zoning it public. I think we're looking at making it a city complex, so we're going to build something very large, and you know, if it's attractive on the outside, great, but that's too large to, to ever fit in with anything surrounding it, no matter what you do with the outside.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone else?
I must apologize, we did not hear the traffic study at all. I don't know what the credentials of the gentleman were, and we didn't hear any of the dialogue. Uh, unfortunately, we're getting, well, fortunately, we're getting a new speaking system, and so I hope that solves the problem. But the back of the room, especially with us old people that have somewhat of a hearing problem, you can't hear very much.
Okay.
With that, with that in mind...
Can you give me your name and your address?
I can do that, I remembered that. My name is Fred Illardi, I live at three forty-six East Shoreline Drive. I've been a resident of the city for eleven years, I've been coming here twenty years, or thirty years now. Thank you. Why am I here tonight? Simply stated, I am concerned, I'm a concerned citizen, here to challenge the use of historic property sitting in the middle of a beautiful neighborhood for a public safety complex. I can say the same thing that my wife's aunt said to me in a heated fa- family discussion, "You don't have a dog in this fight." And if I did not believe it was a citizen's duty to speak up early in the process and identify a possible situation that I believe was wrong, I was shirking my, an implied responsibility. I think we all must ensure that the city is operating in a financially viable way, and insist that the evaluations, that evaluations are provided and reviewed and evaluated for the validity. With that in mind, let me say the following. What is zoning? It is protection, simply protection. When we decide to purchase a piece of property, we want to know at the time of purchase what we can build near it, and what I, and what am I about, what am I about to buy? In some way, it creates a neighborhood where people live and socialize together. You are here today with the charter of deciding whether to rezone the Seven Gables slash FLYTH property. A series of events, including a costly mistake by the city made purchasing the property in two thousand and sixteen for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, have led us here. You will vote whether to change the zoning for twelve twenty and twelve twenty and a half Georgia Avenue from R fourteen large lot, single family resident to P. But in effect, you will decide whether, whether to place the own, place where the only, decide whether the only place North Augusta can reasonably locate its public safety headquarters is on this lot in our one and only historic district on the national register. On May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning commission held a public meeting to discuss rezoning of the two point four one acres at those addresses. After consideration and considerable discussion, excuse me, including input from numerous concerned citizens, the planning commission was polled. The statements from six commissioners and the chairman were fairly consistent and are preserved on the city website. Of special interest to me is the statement by Commissioner and now Mayor Britton Williams. "I believe," and I quote, "I believe the neighborhood preservation overlay district should be preserved in the area, especially given the citizen input into the history of North Augusta." In a seven to zero vote, the application was rejected. The city went on to generously offer two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for another property on Martin Town Road, one purchased by the owner for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a short time earlier, and where the new fire station is currently being built. Everybody wins. But the city circled back around to the Seven Gables FLYTH property for the site of the public safety facility. Everyone agrees, absolutely everyone agrees, that a new public safety facility is urgent, is an urgent requirement. The need existed long before Riverside Village was imagined, yet city officials did not give the priority it deserved. The need has continued to grow as our North Augusta population expands. We spent sixty million dollars and did not handle this problem yet. The sense of urgency has recently been accelerated. On June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, a presentation was made by the city and Johnson, LaShoba, and Associates, architects known as L, JLA. Many construction projects in the past have been executed by this firm. They made a comparison between two, and only two sites for the building for public safety, for the public safety headquarters. One was identified as Buena Vista, located on Riverside Village and Buena Vista Avenue, and the second was called George Avenue, the property in the historic district. Are there only two suitable tracts of land in a city of twenty-one square miles populated by twenty-three thousand people? I don't think so. Did they do their due diligence? I don't think so. I am neither a builder nor an architect, but I had some unanswered questions about the presentation. Somehow, the following line items were only on the Buena Vista side of the proposal. I brought the document, if you'd like to review it. A ten-foot wall costing two hundred and, four hundred and forty-six thousand plus dollars, soil stabilization of seven hun- nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, soil, imported soil at, at a cost of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, erosion control of eighty-seven thousand, and road improvements of a hundred and sixteen sevens, a hundred and sixteen nine, nine thousand dollars. None of these items needed for the Georgia Avenue site? If you look at the presentation, there is zero. Will there be no road improvements? No new traffic lights to help route the increases and changes in traffic patterns? Is it possible that L, JLA, having a vested business interest in this project and maintaining a good relationship with the city, were biased in their cost estimate towards the property the city has always preferred? After the presentation, citizens were allowed to speak and provided three, or possibly more, options. One option was the use of the community center property. Another was the almost vacant Medec building, of which thirty thousand square feet of office space is available now. JLA mentioned an issue of colder pipe on the community property, but admitted they had not studied the property occupying, for occupying only the public safety facility. It had been previously deemed too small to house both public safety and fire station one. The current city administrator said he had dismissed the Medec building from consideration because he disliked renting. In fact, City Hall, where we sit today, is rented. Thirty thousand square feet of the Medec building is available now, without a year-long build. It is attached to a twelve million dollar garage. We have not been told how long Medec's lease is, but we have all seen a practically empty garage. When their, when is their lease up? Given changing industry needs and staffing patterns, people working from home, they could move out, and we will have neither the tax revenue or any way of using vacant office space and parking space. The city is committing sixteen million dollars to build a new public safety facility. But in my simple calculation, I can project at least a fi- a five million dollar savings from using, for using Medec instead. Certainly, Medec is not the only place a public safety facility can be located, but our city lead- leaders owe us, the taxpayers, a study of more than two sites, but an un- but, but from an unbiased firm. Although they cannot develop the Seven Gables property as currently zoned, the city should not throw good money after bad. Instead, they could reimburse Aiken County for the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital project sales tax three, and set aside the parcels for further use. How about a historic park, creating destination tourism for which the city aspires? Surely, with true community involvement, creative minds, minds, and collective fundraising efforts can birth something that showcases our unique history, as a freeman's town after the Civil War, as the former Hollywood of the East, or the hometown of a lauded writer. As you deliberate tonight, think back to the seven zero vote. Again, rezoning, against rezoning on May seven, seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and ask yourself, what has changed? Has the historic district changed? No. Has the neighborhood preservation district changed? No. The only thing that changed was the fire station request is now replaced, is now being replaced by the public safety facility. Well, we have been discussing this location for too long. Do not say that. Please do not say, "We have been discussing this location for too long." So let's go ahead, we're rezoning so we can move on. Once the historic district is destroyed, it is gone forever. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Ken Powell, and I live at three twenty Clay Street. I learned something tonight, that I had not heard. And, that was that city council's charter, was to, the property that they own. I had never heard that before. Okay, so, now it's coming obvious, as to why there's no land available. So, let me, let me read you my presentation, but I didn't know that before this meeting tonight. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the charter. That, land that they own. Okay. So, tonight, I'd like to give you some things to think about, concerning locating the new public safety headquarters, as formerly known as the Seven Gables and Flyth property. I myself, am a lifelong resident of North Augusta. I do not live in the historic district. I do not live in that neighborhood preservation overlay, but I have a great respect, for the homes, and that property that's there. As was mentioned, let's just recap, just a, just a second, and, and I'd like you to think about this. In two thousand and sixteen, three parcels were bought, at a cost of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with capital project sales tax three funds, and we're already on capital project sales tax four. Tonight, you're being asked to make a very important decision, on the location of the public safety headquarters. And I'd like to give you some information, I don't know if you have it, but it may help you with your decision, and put this discussion, in better perspective. Think about this. The land that we're talking about tonight, is four point four five acres. Mr. Illardi mentioned, and he and I did not talk, but Mr. Illardi mentioned, we're twenty-one square miles of North Augusta. Well, that equates to over thirteen thousand, three, it equates to thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty acres, in North Augusta city limits. So out of over thirteen thousand acres, we can only find, four and a half acres, that is suitable, for our public safety headquarters? And, that four point four five, is in, our historic district, and I'll go on to say, it's our one and only historic district, there are no others. And, it's in the National Historic Register. It doesn't make sense. So personally, as a citizen, I'd like to see the headquarters located somewhere else. I'd like to tell you tonight, where that would be. Some options have been presented, but I don't know the best location, for the public safety headquarters at this time. However, I believe our town should main ownership, maintain ownership, of these parcels, and should use them for something of higher significance, down the road. And by higher significance, I mean, with a vision, of what North Augusta is, what North Augusta has been. We can put, let's be honest, we can put a public safety headquarters, in a lot of places, in North Augusta. Why are we taking our one and only, property that's located in the historic district? I'd like you to ask yourself a couple questions, do not tonight. And I've tried to put myself in your shoes, sitting on the Planning Commission. Do you think that you have been given, all the options, that are available? To my knowledge, the only thing you've been given, is West Buena Vista, or East Buena Vista, and Seven Gables. Are you personally convinced, that there is no other location, in our over thirteen thousand acres? Have you seen a comparison, of sites? I mean a detailed analysis, of what's been looked at, what were the benefits of each site, what were the consequences of each site, and what was the cost, of each site? If I were in your position, I'd like that information, so I could make an educated and informed decision, on where is the right location. I don't envy any of you tonight. You've been asked to support the chi, the city's chosen site. Yet you have a moral obligation, to convince yourselves, that this is the best and only location. Another thought I'd like to leave you with, is, is this. The engineering firm that evaluated, the caretaker's cottage, and carriage house, in the property, Seven Gables/Flyth property, issued a, what they referred to as a building assessment, for North Augusta Public Safety and Fire Station Number One, relocation, twelve twenty, twelve twenty and a half, Georgia Avenue. And in that building assessment, there's two items that caught my attention. One was, it says, "We do not see how it would be possible to argue, that either of the buildings in question, two twenty, two twenty and a half, contribute to the character of the district, of the historic district. They are largely unviewable, from the main thoroughfares, concealed behind excessive vegetation, and inaccessible, due to measures taken to deny access, to the public." And it goes on to say, "Since there is no historical value, to maintain or renovate the buildings, we would recommend demolishing the buildings, and making more land available for city use." Okay, that was the engineering firm's report, their building assessment.
Mr. Powell.
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to cut you off, but then you wrap the start.
Okay, I, I wind it up, I wind it, but this is something I want you to, you realize. What I've got in my hand here, is a letter, from the Office of South Carolina Department of Archives and History, that states just the opposite. In fact, it says the following. "I'm writing to you to confirm, for you, that the above referenced properties, twelve twenty and twelve twenty and a half, Georgia Avenue, are contributing properties, in the Georgia Avenue Historic Butler Avenue District, that was listed in the National Historic Places in nineteen, on April the fifth, nineteen eighty-four." This letter was signed by Mr. Brad Sauls, of the State Historic Preservation Office. So, what I want you to realize, and I, I will wrap up here, I'm, I'm close, but what I want you to realize, is, this letter from Mr. Sauls, was written, after the property was vandalized, and after Todd Glover, did his independent investigation, of the property. It still had historical significance. And, and this is my final point. Mr. Illardi mentioned that the same engineering firm, that stated the Buena Vista headquarters, would cost sixteen million dollars. Has that estimated, estimate been evaluated, by an independent AE firm? Don't you think it should be? Remember, it's the same firm, that said the properties had no historic value, that has put a price of sixteen million dollars, to the city, to make a decision. So, all I'm asking of you is, don't, don't approve this request tonight, unless you, as planning commissioners, are absolutely certain, that this is the best location, for our town. To make a decision, because we desperately need a new public safety headquarters, and we spent too much time discussing the issue, that's not justification, for locating it on this site. I agree, absolutely I agree, too much time has been spent here. The land was bought in, in sixteen. But we as a city, should have made this decision years ago. And I'm respectfully asking you, not to let expediency, force you into compromising your own standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Anyone else?
My name is Mike Hitchler, I, I live in the yellow house, across from the, the property in question, on the other side of Observatory.
Name again?
I live at thirteen hundred Georgia Avenue.
Your name again?
Mike Hitchler.
Hitchler.
And I have a little different take, I think, than others. In, in forty-six years, as a professional engineers, engineer, I've never found a, an optimal solution, for any difficult problem. It's always been a balance, of a number of attributes, we're trying to satisfy. And that's where the term satisficing comes from, when you come up with a solution. It, it means, no one's ecstatic about what you came up with, when you find, find a solution that you've crafted, that gets, it's so that people can live with it. And I think the key thing, is talking about the attributes. Right now, I don't like the, the police station going in that location, but I think it is the right option. And the reason I come up with this, is, I've got three basic reasons. First, the public safety building location has been debated for five years. It's paralysis by analysis, in my view. We need to get on with it. It's, our police officers deserve better than having to work in antiquated, mold-infested buildings. It's, it's a shame, it's a disservice to them as well. The police officers have already said that they like this location. Second of all, the Flyth properties, I agree with Ken, the Flyth properties are important properties. They're, they're deteriorating very quickly. I snuck in there a couple days ago, and I'd say we have no more than two years, maybe one year, before you can't recover it. Historic North Augusta, has talked about, options for that, we're not, a lot of volunteers are going to get in there and start to stabilize it and work with it, once the decision is made, that this is the location. The layout, that Mr. Clifford presented, at council meeting, preserves those, those buildings. Third thing is that, due to the way that the property was purchased, I, my understanding is that there's a limitation, on what we can do with it, if we don't use it for this property, for the intended purpose. Which means, in my view, that it's gonna be bought up by a commercial entity, at some point. When it's bought up by a commercial entity, that means that we're reverting back to general commercial. There's still the overlays in there, but there's an awful lot of things that could go in there, that in my view, could be much worse, than a, than a police station. So, I think, so I'd rather work with the city, and to figure out ways in which we can preserve, the key attributes of the Butler Avenue Historic District. Mr. Clifford has started on, on that process. I've always vehemently objected to the P designation, because I felt that that just gave carte blanche. That there needs to be something else, besides just a P, where you can do anything you want, in this fragile district. Second thing is, we have to make sure that preservation of the Flyth properties, is a mandated thing. It can't just be a, a women and prayer, that this gets done. Third thing is that, the neighborhood is basically Greek revival, and Victorian architecture, with some Italianate. This is a, a good start, but we can go a lot further than that. An example is this building itself here, is more of a Greek, a modern Greek revival rendition, which I thought, I think was done reasonably well. Richard Fletcher may object, but, but I think that, but I think there are ways to do it, and working with people like architects, like Richard, and with the neighborhood, we can actually develop something that would be compatible. But the final thing, is that we have to recognize, that this is a mixed usage neighborhood. It's a mixture of low-impact commercial, meaning funeral home, things like that, and residential. What that means is, we have to be careful about the traffic, and in particular, the noise levels. I realize the police station has to operate twenty-four seven, but the way to put regulations, or, or in the, in the, what the city proposes, that will put limitations on the kinds of noise, and kinds of activities that would be allowed. So, I think there are ways to do this, also that, I'd like the, consider that using the cutouts that are already on Georgia Avenue, as opposed to cutting into Observatory, and into Butler Avenue. I think that's one way to help preserve the neighborhood, in terms of less traffic. And the other thing is to make certain that there's a very strong noise barriers, that are built between the Star of Edge Fields, and, and the Scott residence, in particular. So finally, I feel this can be done, without destroying our, our neighborhood, but it's gonna take more than just approving P, as the zoning. There has to be some characteristics, or some requirements that are put on it. That says, here's the sense of the city, and the neighbors, as to what would be a good neighbor, if this is done. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm reading a letter, given to us by a neighbor that wasn't able to be here tonight.
And your name is?
My name is Karen Powell, I live at three twenty Clay Avenue. This is from Mr. Bill Scott, that lives at fourteen oh one Observatory. "To the Planning Commission, due to the illness of my wife, I am not able to attend the meeting. I do want to go on record, as opposing, the public safety building on the Flyth property. In nineteen eighty-four, I built my home, next to the property of Mr. Miss Flyth. I never dreamed that anyone would ever think of putting a public safety building there, since it is an established older neighborhood. There are numerous reasons for not building on this property. Rezoning change in an established neighborhood, a blind curve, lights will not prevent accidents. Destroying, the peace of our neighborhood. The fact that this is the last piece of historic land in the city, and is connected to the founders of North Augusta. Once it is gone, it can never be replaced. If you think about it, it's an odd place to put a public safety building, no matter how you dress it up. And lastly, when you destroy your history, you destroy your roots. This is happening all over America, and I plead with you, not to let it happen here. In closing, I want to say that I fully support the police department. I do not think there is a better department, anywhere in the country. They deserve the new building, but not on the Flyth property. I want to thank all of you for giving your time, to help our city. Best regards, Bill Scott."
Thank you.
Oh, you'll have to bear with me, I just lost my contact.
Good evening, my name's Lorraine Mitten, I live at one Bull and Court. And I have a lot of respect for the amount of preparation, and research, and presentation that's gone on, that you've already heard tonight. I'm just speaking as a resident, not just, but, you know, I really love living here, lived here, I think, close to seventeen years now, and the charm of this city, and the intention I have, in the rest of my life where I want to live. You know, I believe in law enforcement, I believe in law and order, of this great nation. But it is not the place, to put it, in the most beautiful part of the city. Every time I go around that curb, on Georgia Avenue, especially at night, that view just, just takes my breath away, it's, it's beautiful. And having lived here, and participated from the peripheries, of this process, of how the city works, with city council, and the planning, and all of this, I, I, I'm very disappointed, frankly. That's just all I can say, because I know, that the great minds, I used to live in Greenville. Think of what I watched happen, in nine years of living in Greenville. And how they made Main Street, and, and the state, just so many things there, I just watched happen, I took it for granted, it was just like magic, it just got better, and better, and better. And I just expected, when I moved here, in two thousand and five, that that's the kind of thing that would happen, because it's South Carolina, there are great minds here, with great intentions. I would like to see, these great minds, make way, for things that make sense. Put law enforcement, in a place of fortitude. Put it in a place, where it can even grow, if it needs to. And make our historic district, a place where it's protected, where it can continue to be, so that my children, and my grandchildren, this can continue to be a beautiful place, to go, to look out, for whatever else, is historic. But I believe that that can happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stephen Bryant, one twenty-
Steven Bryant, 129 Butler Avenue.
Mr. Bryant, for time's sake, if comments have been made, if you don't have to reiterate them.
Well, no, I don't intend to.
Okay, alright.
But I'd like to, if I may, approach and hand these for you guys to look at. First, I'd like to say that I do appreciate the way Mr. Clifford's gone about taking in public input. I feel he's sincere in trying to make this work. But I do take issue with the statement that was made in reference to, he didn't make the statement, but the statement was that we're going to do everything we can to comply with the neighborhood preservation overlay. I know that overlay in the Texas, I'm sure you do. There isn't one thing about this project that complies with those regulations. I'm not going to go through it because you should know it. For time's sake. But also, as far as the neighborhood preservation overlay, the NPO, many people seem to be uncertain on what would be an allowed use for the property if the city decided to sell it. The NPO from the City Ordinance Article III was created with an emphasis on preserving residential character, excuse me, protecting the property values, health, safety, and general welfare surrounding neighborhoods. The NPO is established to preserve and protect residential neighborhoods compatible with neighboring residential properties. The NPO was not only intended to protect the properties on which the overlay is designated, but even so, more so on the adjacent properties. Liquor store, adult bookstore, car wash, things that have been mentioned in the past. And increased traffic generation would not be compatible with these requirements. This tells you how crucial, as you know, to preserve the integrity of the overlays. It's critical enough that the city administrator and attorney stated to us at the study session back in 2017 that this project would comply with all the requirements of the NPO. The city complied by removing the NPO from the property they rezoned to public use. The administrator stated that cities and counties, the prior administrator stated that cities and counties in South Carolina do it all the time. That paper you have in front of you, I made calls to all those cities and counties. And you can read their comments, but not a single one of them exempts themselves from their own overlays and their own requirements. There are close to 4,000 people that live within and directly adjacent to the NPOs and possibly don't even realize how susceptible they are to the encroachment by large, commercial-sized projects. I encourage citizens to research, look it up, and see where they are, because currently, the city is working to remove most of those protections from those areas. The Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual, 10th Edition, indicates there would be a minimum of 670 vehicles generated per day by this facility. That's based on the square footage of the building, their manual, not mine. That would be routed to these small residential streets. According to the South Carolina data, there are currently 475 cars that go down Butler Avenue. There's an issue with sight distance on Butler Avenue. I've stood and cannot see over the hump. Put yourself in a car, that's another three feet lower. Driveway separation is minimum at best on Butler Avenue. On May 17, the Planning Commission recommended against rezoning for the fire station 7-0. The fire station, with all the concerns and requirements for it to be located as close to the center of the circle of service, this commission unanimously ejected city's request to rezone the property. Why? Because this commission understood the impacts it would have on their surrounding properties, and it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, as much as what's outlined in your package. So then what happened? Several members spoke, stated that this was, quote, "not the right location." The city looked in earnest for another property and was able to cite the fire station within that center circle with safer access to arterial roads and lesser impact to adjoining properties. Current city administrator stated that the location of this facility and how public safety operates is not dependent upon centrally located as the fire station required. The rezoning for the fire station was withdrawn by the city, even though the arguments about location were valid. The rezoning would have, in effect, overturned everything in the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. March 15, 2018, Planning Commission recommended against mountaineers' request for a text amendment to remove the NPO. City engineers stated it was inconsistent with multiple requirements. Some planning commissioners stated the need to, quote, "comply with the development code instead of changing the rules for an individual application." Another one, "take issue with changing the rules for one property owner because it's equivalent to spot zoning." Spot zoning may cause unintended consequences in future applications. October 17, 2019, Dunkin' Donuts made a request to rezone two parcels on Martin Town in Jersey. Planning Commission stated concerns with hours of operation, which were only 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Police station, as you know, is 24/7. Commission requested a lighting and traffic study and unanimously recommended against the request to rezon, as well as requests to remove it from the NPO. If the Planning Commission voted to deny these requests for development and only partially violated requirements of the NPO and are in regular sections of the city, how then can it even consider granting this request for rezoning for a project that will have a much larger adverse impact on the surrounding area to include traffic congestion and an area that is recognized by the National Register of Historic Places? If this rezoning is granted, the only thing that will be accomplished is this property gets developed and creates potential significant adverse impacts to the surrounding area. There will be no opportunity for future development to occur from this massive investment. Around 1993, Columbia County began building their government complex in a rural area of the county. It is now transformed to the area to a vibrant town center. With business parks, restaurants, performing arts centers, shopping centers. This is the type of vision we need to seek for North Augusta. For example, imagine the possibilities if this were to be located on Martin Town Road near X1 and I-20. The area of the city, this area has not seen much development despite being at an interstate exit. The city has previously stated that this would be the location for a future fire station. The original request from Public Safety was to have the complex, Fire Station, Public Safety, Headquarters, and Courthouse at all in one location. Sure, this will take additional time to plan, research, and design, but to get this right at this juncture, the city's development would have far-reaching ramifications that could change the entire dynamics of this area for generations to come. Or are we saying that this is the best option? To force the project to the default property, one that many of you have stated in the past, "not the right property." It is my experience in the development field and in life that whenever you force something, it never turns out right. What needs to be considered is the bigger picture, the potential for encouraging future development by creating places, placemaking, to reimagine and reinvent public spaces and community-driven development. This project has the potential to spur considerable economic development if it's located in an area ready for growth. The city is requesting you set aside the development code, comprehensive plan, and NPO to develop a four-acre parcel in the middle of the Historic District with no future possibility to positively change the surrounding area. What we're asking from this Planning Commission is to not only be consistent with previous decisions, but to recognize the potential for a much better outcome similar to what resulted from the new fire station's location. And hold the city to its promise that the project will comply with the neighborhood preservation overlay. This is the point in time in which you have to make a meaningful impact on the city's future, to think big and bold, to have the vision that results in a positive direction, both in preserving the Historic District and the direction of development that will benefit all the city now and in the future. Thank you for allowing me.
You're going to be the last one, and can you make it short? Because I think we can go on all night. We've gotten one pro and three cons.
One pro and three cons?
Yeah.
I'm Dave Leverett. I live at 121 Butler Avenue. I had a lot to say, but words kind of left me. Been at this a long time. We've discussed a lot of, a lot of things together. I want you to consider this. Over the last four years, what argument has been robust and compelling? What pillar of virtue has been endorsed? What integrity has been demonstrated? What skill has been displayed? What beauty has been treasured and protected? What excellence has been presented? I spoke on this topic the first time in December of 2017. Was attending a council meeting, first time in many years, just to support other friends who had another issue at stake. Can't time for citizens' comments, I couldn't comment about like I couldn't tonight. But finally got up and asked this question, and we'll repeat it. This is what it said four years ago. Who are we? What makes a North Augustan a North Augustan? What is it that distinguishes us from any other people or any other city? This is a signature property. It's the signature of our city. Now, I'll admit, it's come a long way. But I still don't see that a strip mall, municipal complex, is appropriately located as property. Where are we going? Where are we going as a city? Who's setting the vision? We talk about revitalizing downtown. Putting this on Butler Avenue is not going to help revitalize downtown. We talk about moving out, moving out from, to the center of the city. I trace the route. If you move to the center of the city, it ends up at DeGraff Chiropractic Center, about two to three miles from the intersection to Bellwood or Clearwater Road. It doesn't move to the center. What do we accomplish at this site that makes us replace what can be a signature location, and has been a signature location for this city for, since the beginning, since it began? It doesn't fit. It still doesn't fit. I'm hopeful that something can fit, but this still doesn't work. And bottom line to me is, I think, I think we have the wrong people working on it. I think we need to change the group of people who are working on it and get people who really understand this city, really have a depth of understanding, and can introduce something here that is worth the 110, 20-year wait that this city has basically had for this property. Thank you. And I'm hoping this is the last time we have to address this. Thank you very much.
Can I get a motion there in the public hearing?
James Adams, live at 201 East Martin Town Road. I just want to tell everyone how much I appreciate and respect our Public Safety Department. I'm also a lifelong resident of North Augusta with exception for a little while. And I know how long that city hall's been down there, and it needs to be replaced. However, I'll have to tell you right now, the chosen spot is the wrong place, in my opinion. That property, I spent many a day playing up there as a child back in the 50s and 60s, and that's a function of age. But it has a historical significance, and it's next door to the man that owned all the property that is now North Augusta. Fifty-five hundred acres or something to that effect. And I think that property would best be served to be converted into something like some really upscale residential properties versus put this municipal building, not municipal building, Public Safety building there. And I would bank that up, back that up with the traffic flow on Georgia Avenue, it's not going to get any better, and the severe turns and curves from the post office, the post office and that down by the Butler Avenue. And then the traffic on Martin Town Road is increasing exponentially over the last five years. And it's just a cut-through from Columbia County to Savannah River Park or something, I believe. But regardless, I stand here and tell you that I think that property has a better use than use of its public safety, which should be located somewhere else in North Augusta. Thank you.
I get a second. The property moved the second that we end the public hearing. And all the favors signified by saying aye. Ayes had, and we have order. Any discussion, commissioners?
Well, I think we should have a lot of discussion, to be honest with you. This thing's been for us several times. The P designation for the city grew out of this piece of property, rezoning of this piece of property, and ability to develop according to the overlay. It's subjective. And I think both times, with the vote on the P designation for the city, it was seven-oh against from the Planning Commission, which went to City Council and then was approved. So I don't know, there's a whole lot of difference, however, in a project like this. I think this whole project has been sore out for the city. I think it's, if not criminal, or close to it. It's a good old boy decisions, at the least. And I'm very disappointed. We're subjected to having to make a decision that should never have been, should never have had to make. And, you know, to make matters worse, the city was purchased with funds that we were told could not, property could not be used for any other purpose but the public safety. And if it was not used for public safety, then it would have to be sold, and the monies go back into the general fund. Now, Mr. Lawrie, I'll include the fact that maybe the city could reimburse a income account for these funds and keep the property for a better use. And there are lots of better uses for this property. I just don't feel like that we've been totally given the facts. I've seen the figures that Mr. Lawrie, I'll leave you to as far as the cost for the different sites. And when I saw the figures the first time for the municipal site, I was kind of taken back. I used to, I was a landscape contractor, and we built a lot of halls. That's one of the things that we did. And to look at $900,000 for dirtwork or whatever is a little bit asinine. So I don't feel like we were totally given to up and up on these figures. And I do feel like that the company that's hired duties announces for buy. And I just resent the fact of being a planning commission and have to go through what we've gone through with this project. And so I'm just intent, but we don't want that.
Thank you, Commissioner Watts. Any other comments, sentiments? Anything for the good of the order?
I would say I think everybody understands that we can't approve all, all we can do is recommend. And they didn't ask us whether we should build a public safety. Technically, all they asked us was to recommend rezoning. Everybody knows what it's for, so much willing. And all we can do is make a recommendation. And thankfully, so far, there's none of the complaints. I think we're a lot accepted.
I have a couple of comments.
Very good.
Not sure where to start. First off, thank you, everybody, for being here and your comments. Thank you for taking part. I mean, this is... I mean, this is probably one of the largest meetings I've attended, and I've been a planning commissioner for an awful long time. The only larger one I think may have been the municipal building, which everybody thought about it as well. I completely understand and agree with the need for a new police station. I think everybody sitting in here does as well. Chief Thomas and all the fine officers, some of which I know personally, keep our city safe on a daily basis, and they deserve a new state-of-the-art complex to handle what they do and keep us safe. Three years ago, we started this process, maybe longer than that, I lose track, my major concern, the front end was traffic, and what was going to happen on that hill with a police station there. That is still a major concern to me. Something else just came up this evening with some comments that were made earlier. If we were to approve this rezoning, is the city concerned at all about any litigation that may take place from ones we did not approve earlier based on a similar situation? I ate one down the street about two blocks away. That company has now moved out of the area, but I'm sure they would be definitely excited to know that we approved something that we denied them within reasonable distance. Again, I am for a new police station. I'm not for a new police station in this location that's being presented to me. And I want to clear one thing up as well, when Ms. Reed was down here earlier, she indicated that we didn't know the previous, we knew what was going to be in the previous zoning, we knew that. I think in Mr. Paradise's defense, he was alluding to the issue that was on scale tonight. Okay, just, I wanted to defend our interim because he is getting hit with this head-on. Remember, he was not here, so I wanted to clarify that for his benefit. And with that, that's all I got.
As the acting chair, I reckon I'll be the last to advocate in defense for our gains. I always ask myself, what's the highest and best use for any particular land, and what's the economics in this land? And I stated before that I'm not a zealot. In business, in engineering, a lot of things are dynamic, they change, and oftentimes, if you want to continue to exist, you're going to have to change with them. But we have boundaries, we have guidelines, we have rules, we have plans to kind of give us some help as to how do we measure this. And frankly, when we sent the city back to bring back to us, I was expecting a little bit more meat. If we were in a court of public opinion and we had a pro and a con, the city didn't make their case. I was looking for a traffic study, and I don't think we took into consideration the visitors, the people that are going to be applying, I mean, coming to the court. Also, with a municipal building, if it's in a centrally located area, it can generate other businesses like cafes, doctors' offices, and this doesn't seem like it's going to accomplish that. The city of Augusta debated for quite some time, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars where they were going to put their new civic center. And one wanted to move way outside so that they can generate malign businesses, and then one group wanted to keep it in the city limits where it is existing now. And so sometime you have to listen to and lead to what are other cities doing? And other cities are moving them in urban areas so that they can perpetuate businesses. And so whenever I'm trying to make a decision, we got a two-later stool, and this is through commissioner's training, and you're looking for that third, three-later stool, and we are teeter-tottering there too, and I'm always looking for that third leg, and the city didn't provide the third leg. So the stool is still teeter-tottering, but not a clear source of how we need to go forward on it. And for that reason, I will be recommending decline. Having said that, can we get a motion? Having heard now as the...
Someone's got to make a motion.
I can make it if you don't want to make it.
Let's see, what is this? Okay, this application, RZM21005, I make a motion that we... Well, we can't make a negative motion. I make a motion that we send this to city council, depending on how the vote goes, whether it be affirmative or negative, and I think we should send it on as the motion's written or the request is written to be rezoned to P. from the previous zone of R14 and commercial, general commercial.
If I can clarify, so voting for, we will send it to the city affirmatively. Voting nay, we will not be sending it to the city affirmatively to rezon. Are we all clear? All in favor? Can I get a yea?
You got a second.
Your second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's been properly motion and second, all in favor of going forward with the recommendation to the city? Can I get a aye? All opposed? May I get a nay? We've got, you abstained. We have five nays to send it to the city as a P. Mr. Paradise, can you give a staff report, and then we will adjourn?
I forgot all about Mr. Chairman in preparing the meeting.
Having heard that they were missing the package, we will get them via email and cite them for our next meeting, the staff reports for this month. Can I get a motion to his juror? Need standing juror.